The Royal Commission into Defence and Veteran Suicide is now in session, please be seated.
Good morning, Miss Longbottom.
Good morning, Commissioner Caldas. Commissioners, a key question being examined by this Royal Commission is whether the Australian Defence Force has a governance system that recognises the safety of its members as a governance issue, and sufficiently prioritises their mental health and wellbeing. Taking meaningful steps to address the over-representation of defence and veteran suicide demands a governance structure that is accountable for the mental and physical health of its members. In hearing block nine, you heard evidence from Denise Goldsworthy AO, the Chair of the Navy Clearance Divers Trust. Ms Goldsworthy gave evidence of a time of trauma within the Navy Clearance Diver Community following the suicide of three of its members over the space of approximately 18 months. The third suicide occurred around the time this Royal Commission was announced. Divided by COVID but united in their grief, the Clearance Diver Community was prompted to act. Over the period of about six months, a group of six Clearance Divers aided by Ms Goldsworthy put together a detailed submission for the Royal Commission. That submission, which included surveys of the Clearance Diver Community, raised substantive concerns about high levels of physical injury and medical discharge, service-related mental health issues and self-harm amongst its members. The Trust provided a copy of the survey to the Chief of Navy. His response was that while the submission contains information that Defence would have interest in exploring further, there are strict guidelines that need to be followed when conducting activities of that nature. You will recall Commissioners, Ms Goldsworthy's disappointment that this was pretty much the end of the conversation, and her expectation that there would be some engagement, some conversation about, so what does this mean, what is the cause and effect? Today, you will hear evidence from three members of the Navy Clearance Diver Community, Michael Maylie, Ashley Simmons and Jeremy Thomas. Their experiences are disparate, but the common thread is that each of these individuals have experienced adverse mental health that is linked, at least in part, to their experiences during their time as a Navy Clearance Diver. They will speak about those experiences, but Mr Maylie, Mr Simmons and Mr Thomas will also offer their perspectives on the issues of accountability and governance as it relates to their time in the Navy. Each of these individuals give evidence as witnesses of fact, and Commissioners, the Commonwealth has indicated that at least at this stage, it does not propose to seek leave to cross-examine the witnesses. Commissioners, I call Michael Maylie. To you, Michael Maylie, swear by Almighty God that the evidence you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do. Thank you.
Can you please state your full name?
That is Michael Rosary Maylie.
Mr Maylie, you are a veteran Navy Clearance Diver?
Yes, I am.
And during your time in service, you were the recipient of both the conspicuous Service Cross?
Yes.
And the distinguished Service Cross?
A distinguished Service Medal.
Service Medal, thank you. You've provided a statement to the Royal Commission that is dated the 4th of July 2023?
Yes, I did.
Have you had an opportunity to review that statement?
I have.
Do you have any corrections you wish to make to it?
No.
Is that statement true and correct to the best of your knowledge and belief?
It is.
Operators, can you please display the tender bundle? Commissioners, I tender the documents identified in the list in the manner in which they are described.
Thank you, Miss Longbottom. They'll be accepted into evidence and allocated the next lot of numbers. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Caldas. Mr Maylie, you gave over 35 years of full-time service to the Navy?
I did, yes.
You joined in 1983?
Yes.
And you were compulsorily transferred to the Reserve Service in about 2019?
2021 was effective, yeah.
2021. What led you to join the Navy?
I grew up in a small country town where there weren't really any employment opportunities and it was a way of getting employment and also going through university.
And did you have any family background in the military?
No, apart from grandparents that had served in the war.
And how old were you when you joined?
Seventeen.
Now, you didn't immediately become a Clearance Diver?
No, I was a seaman officer and served on ships prior to becoming a Clearance Diver.
And am I right that it was about 10 years later when you started the Clearance Diving Training Course?
Yes.
Now, at that time, was that about 1994?
Yes, yeah.
At that time, there was no selection testing to become a Clearance Diver?
There was not for officers, there was for junior sailors.
So how did you come to qualify for the course?
You applied for the course and were panelled by the Director of Naval Officers' Postings and then placed on course.
How many trainees did you start the course with?
Thirteen.
How many did you finish with?
Four.
What was your experience of the training course?
It was probably the hardest thing I've ever done in my life, very physically demanding, very little sleep, operating under pressure and being able to learn skills and execute them under extreme pressure.
Now, in your statement, you say that it's not uncommon to have a low pass rate for that training course, but that was the exact reason why, after your time, the selection process was brought in. Can you explain to Commissioners what you mean by that?
So, there was a very high failure rate due to both physical injury and also the intensity of the training, because there was no screening. They implemented a two-week period where they screened candidates to come on to Clearance Diver training, and they found that whilst they had a high rate of failure on the screening, those that then started the course, they had an extremely high percentage of pass rate. And I think that the figures are going from a 75% failure rate to about a 90% success rate.
And given your experiences about the difficulties of the training course itself, in your view, is the selection course a protective factor in some senses for individuals going through that subsequent arduous course?
My opinion is most definitely.
Okay. Now, in your statement, you describe the role of a Clearance Diver as being, in effect, inherently dangerous.
Yes.
Can you give the Commissioners an overview in broad terms of what the job involves?
So, the job involves diving with all of the different jobs that Defence requires, which are anything from benign as diving with scuba to recover items off the seabed, to diving under a ship at night, to clear the ship of any lines that it might have caught up, to then diving on mixed gas sets, to a maximum depth of, my maximum depth was 90 metres, to do minefield clearance and disposal. Also, what we call maritime tactical operations, which is diving on pure oxygen, which in itself has inherent risks of oxygen toxicity, where on my course, we had two near drownings. And then we also do explosive ordinance disposal, including improvised explosive device disposal. And there is all the inherent risks of dealing with live explosives. And then later on in your career, when you're actually doing live operations, such as minefield clearance in Iraq, IED clearance in Afghanistan, you are constantly exposed to the risk of those devices going off.
And one particular risk you talk about in your statement connected with explosive devices is underwater blast exposure?
Yes, there's underwater blast exposure, which can be accidental or also premeditated. And there is also, for some of the career divers that are deployed within certain units, they deploy small charges very close to them and are constantly exposed to over-pressurisation from those charges and also from firing weapons at a higher rate than would be anywhere else across the Navy.
During the course of your career, what exposure have you had to underwater blasts?
I've been involved in approximately two underwater blasts, one accidental and one premeditated, and probably been exposed to in excess of 200 on the surface.
And what about rounds fired?
Approximately 30,000.
And you talk about in your statement how this is a particular area of concern for you, both in, well, I think you talk about it particularly in terms of your concern for other Clearance Divers. Can you explain to Commissioners why you hold those concerns?
I hold them based on some studies that I've been exposed to from both Defence Science and Technology Group and also from our Five Eyes partners for personnel that are not only exposed to one traumatic blast, such as an IED, but those who in their everyday service are exposed to multiple small blasts. And there is increasing evidence that accumulation of over-pressurisation could be leading to traumatic brain injury. Of our members that committed suicide, two of those members were in a unit that were constantly exposed to small arms fire and small charges.
And so I take it from what you say, the relationship between that exposure and those deaths is something that causes you some concern?
It does, and a recommendation I'd made through one of my employments was to fund a further study, which was done through Army.
So that study has been done?
It's being done, yes.
Okay. Another risk you speak about in your statement is the high-tempo nature of Clearance Diver work. Can I ask you to tell Commissioners what your own experience of that has been? So not talking about operationally sensitive information, but the high-tempo nature of the role of a Clearance Diver?
I think the, and putting it into perspective of the broader Navy has what's called a seashore ratio, where they recognise that at sea, you're working extended hours, extended time away from your family, and then that is broken to what they call then shore time, and they have a ratio that you must do sea in shore time. Clearance Divers, when they're at teams, will spend a long time away from home, working extremely long hours in obviously fairly dangerous situations. They then work back on ships, they then work back at the diving school, or they might be deployed to operational areas, and they therefore do not get the respite or did not get the respite during my experiences. I left the Navy after 38 years with 110 days leave balance owing, particularly the operational postings that I had in the latter half of my career didn't allow for that respite time, and quite often you would return from deployment straight into work. So it's a very high-tempo job with very little respite. And those respite opportunities that are offered to broader Navy were generally not implemented with the Clearance Diving World.
And what impact did that have on you and your own family life?
I think it had a significant impact. I think in my statement, I said that by the time my oldest daughter was 21, I'd missed 17 of her birthdays. I spent extensive times away. I probably, I think when I break down the figures, you know, it was probably close to 11 years at sea, two years in war zones, and then the times in between on operationally focused jobs, you know, working in excess of 18-hour days on deployment. There were many periods where you went in excess of 72 hours without sleep.
And I guess that touches on the other sort of aspect or the risk you talk about in your statement about high-tempo work, and that really is, you give some reflections in your statement about the way in which that work has impacted on high rates of people leaving the branch, the Clearance Diving Branch. Can you tell Commissioners about that and those reflections?
So I think in, it's from both my time in command and then also as Head of the Clearance Diving Branch, we suffered, you know, we were classed as a critical category for people leaving. We had extremely high separation rates, and as people were leaving, we would interview them, and a common theme was that they were not getting the respite. An example I'll offer was a senior sailor who had done time at a Clearance Diving team, time in Afghanistan, time with Special Forces, and then they decided that he was due for a sea posting. And so he'd have gone approximately eight years without respite, and we lost him to civilian. And that was a common thread. And then the other common thread was the high degree of medical injuries that people were suffering.
And so are physical injuries sort of an intrinsic risk of life as a Clearance Diver?
I think that they're an intrinsic risk if they're not managed correctly.
Earlier this week, the Royal Commission has heard evidence about the link between injury and pain and poor mental health outcomes. Do you have any observations you'd offer to the Commissioners based on either your experience of that or your observations in command of the experience of others?
I think from a personal experience, it's most definitely a high level of physical injury. I was diagnosed with 17 different conditions which I left the Defence with, and that they are as a result of, you know, your high level of physical activity. There were measures put in place to try and manage these by putting exercise physiologists in Clearance Diving Teams, a study undertaken by University of Wollongong to decrease rehabilitation time and also decrease injuries.
Is that a study that you initiated sort of at some point during your career? I think you had a particular command role at that stage?
Yes, it was when I was the Head of the Clearance Diving Branch with Commission from the University of Wollongong, and we employed exercise physiologists for two years.
And was that, was that project able to be completed?
It was, after I left the position, it was subsequently unfunded by Defence.
And why was that?
I think they, I do not know the exact reason, but I believe it was due to they, the main reason was that they couldn't validate the data because of the inability to access medical records to substantiate there was actually a decrease in injury rate because of the lack of access to medical records.
So just to make sure I understand that, to the extent to which you have awareness about the reasons why it was stopped, it was because there was no substantive link being able to be reached because of difficulties in accessing medical records between the benefits of the project and lessening physical injury rates?
That's my understanding.
Now, this is just your own opinion, but in your own opinion, is that, is that a valid reason not to have completed the project?
In my opinion, no.
Why not?
Because anecdotally, there was enough evidence and most definitely, there was objective evidence to say that what the training regime needed to be, what the pre resilience, what the resilience and rehabilitation needed to be. And it was objective, independent, scientific evidence.
And just so the Commissioners understand, what is the objective evidence that you're referring to there?
It was the studies done by University of Wollongong Human Performance.
So the work that they had produced provided, in your view, that evidence?
Yes, and then the programme of having dedicated rehabilitation people in the teams that were able to get the people back to work in a safer manner without a recurrence of injuries.
Now, this Commission is obviously looking to consider recommendations to the issues that are raised both for your cohort and that for Defence as a whole. Would you have any solutions you would proffer to the high-tempo nature of work as a Clearance Diver to ameliorate that impact on members?
I'd say that, you know, I've not been in the Navy chain of command for probably the last 10 years, and I'm unversed on exactly what they've done, but I would offer that the recognition of the high-tempo nature, the recognition that it is a physically demanding job that is different to any other job in the Navy, and it therefore demands or should be viewed very differently to that of a normal service person, and that they should look at solutions that are not relevant maybe to broader Navy but are specific to Clearance Divers, such as bespoke Army units that have the same focus on human performance.
And, I mean, you were involved, am I right to understand it, in the submission that the Navy Clearance Diver Trust provided to the Royal Commission?
Yes.
And one of the matters that submission makes evident is that really high level of medical separation rates of Clearance Divers from the Navy. And in your view, or on the basis of your work in that submission, are high-tempo and medical separation rates related?
I, anecdotally, yes, there was, and I think our separation rates were as high as in one year. 85% of all separations were medical discharges and medical separations, as opposed to, I think it was much less, you know, I think it was about 18% across Defence. So there was definitely a link to the high tempo and the medical separation. But another issue was that you were not allowed to serve within Clearance Diving organisation if you weren't Medical Category One.
And I think you speak about this in terms of your own experiences, but also in terms of your observations of others when you were in command. Does the need, in your experience, does the need to have a MEC one rating impact, or has it impacted either your capacity to come forward and be full and frank about mental or medical injuries or those under your command?
It was a common knowledge that people were using their Medicare card to go outside of the Defence System because of the fear that being downgraded in a medical status and also particularly mental health issues would affect your medical status and therefore your employability and also your security clearance.
And when you say it was common knowledge, sort of how did you come to have that understanding?
From personal experience and also from people, you know, the community was tight-knit and people would talk about that.
Now, you know, it might be said Clearance Diving is, you know, an intrinsically risky, risky activity that requires a high level of skill. In your view, is there room for Clearance Divers to have meaningful work where they can't have a MEC one rating?
I think most definitely, and the same way that areas in Army and our Five Eyes cohort as well, that they can be employed in capability development, in training, in policy development, and in ensuring that the, those other functions that lead, that, you know, back up the capability are being done by fully qualified people instead of leaving and then not having people in those jobs and focusing on those very important functions.
Because would it be fair to say, at least at the time you left full-time service in the Navy and based as well on what's come out of the service, having the requisite capability of Clearance Divers is a clear and present issue for the Navy?
It must definitely is. They're a, they're a critical category.
And would it be fair to say that it is somewhat of a vicious cycle in that a lack of capability leads to an inability to alleviate high tempo, leads to injuries and medical separations?
And I would, I would offer that from a personal experience, you know, having worked back in the headquarters where you're up to 60% under manned and, you know, that's meant to be your respite posting and you're working 16 to 18-hour days because you don't have the staff, you're not able to fully implement capability and, you know, the governance structures that come behind it. And I would, again, I said I've been out of that world, although I've been in Clearance Diver jobs, but haven't been in that command world for the last 10 years. But I believe the Manning situation is exactly the same as when I was there.
And am I right to understand that one practical way you see to alleviate that issue would be to recognise that Clearance Divers who don't have a MEC one rating still have a valuable contribution that they can make to the Clearance Diving Branch?
Most definitely.
I want to shift topics and come to the several command positions that you held during your time as a Navy Clearance Diver. The first of those was a CO of Australian Clearance Diver Team One in Sydney. In your statement, you make a number of observations based on your experience in command of the particular challenges of deployment to combat zones. Now, you've already spoken in some detail about the impact of high-tempo work on Clearance Divers, but are there any additional observations you would share with Commissioners about the impact of deployment to a combat zone?
I think the thing that makes Clearance Divers unique for their deployments to combat zone that make them more unique to the rest of the Navy is the type, first of all, the type of employment that they do. They were very focused on the improvised explosive device fight in both Iraq and Afghanistan. They get exposed to significant trauma, and they are exposed to very high operational tempo and dangerous situations when they are deployed. The second issue is that they generally deploy as a single Clearance Diver embedded within another unit that might be another service, and in many cases, such as my deployments with a foreign service. A common theme amongst Army and then Navy ships deploying to combat zones is that they are looked after as a formation and as a ship when they deploy. They are looked after when they come home as a ship and a unit, and they are monitored and looked after as a unit. Clearance Divers generally come back after a six-to-seven month deployment, or my last deployment was 12 months, and you are straight back into another job. You are not with people that deployed with you, and you are not looked after as part of a deployed unit. And it's very easy for Clearance Divers to then slip under the radar of the support mechanisms that are available for part of a structured deployment.
And can I ask you to tell Commissioners of your own experience of that?
So I think when we, when I added up my figures, I'd spent over two years in war zones, and I did not get any psychological assessment from my first deployment to Iraq. And then I had four 15-minute psychological interviews, which I believe were just tick and flick.
And in those psychological interviews you got, you had, did you feel that you could be full and frank about the impact of your experiences on your mental health?
My first, the first one coming out of theatre, you're still hypervigilant. You are still, your mind is still very much where you are. You've just come out of theatre two or three days ago, and you don't realise that you have problems and you, 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 I think you're not in a position to answer truthfully the tick and flick. And then the second one, in one instance, was just done over the phone with me. And again, as I referred to before, any fear of disclosing mental health issues can lead to medical degradation and loss of your security clearance.
And is that an apprehension you had personally when you were responding to those psychological?
Yes, it was.
So let's just, if we can shift back in time to your period in command. After about two and a half years, you stepped down from being CO of ACDT One to take a study leave to complete an MBA. Is that right?
Yes, I did.
Now, the Royal Commission heard evidence earlier this week from a panel of witnesses from each service career management agency. One of the matters they raised during their evidence is that- One of the matters they raised during their evidence is that sometimes commanders report that two years is enough in a command position because the intensity of that role can lead to feelings of exhaustion and burnout. What's your own experience of that?
It was very intensive and I think two and a half years would have been the limit, but it's also probably one of the most satisfying from a career perspective. You know, you join as an officer to get command, so it's a double-edged sword.
And I can see the sort of the smile on your face when you say that. And when you say it was one of the most satisfying things, can you explain to the commissioners why that was the case?
I think it's satisfying because of the breadth and depth of the employment that you get and the people that you're leading and clearance divers are highly motivated, highly professional people, as are all Defence people. And, but we were involved in getting people ready to go to Iraq and Afghanistan, we provided security to civilian events such as the Commonwealth Games, APEC visits, Pope visits, as well as then training for a variety of other roles and it's a very satisfying time to be doing something that's relevant.
Now, were you able to complete your study leave?
No, I was returned after, I think, about four weeks to the Deputy Task Group Commander's position due to staff shortages.
And when you say returned, did you have an election about whether or not you came back?
No.
And so can you tell commissioners what happened?
Well, I basically, because I'd already paid for my four units, so I then spent the next three months working a full-time job plus trying to complete four units of the MBA.
And so what impact did that have on you personally?
It was like being deployed, it was very, very long hours, self-imposed, but it was to try and complete both.
Now, shortly after you accepted that new role, as I understand it, there was a restructuring within Navy?
Yes.
And the deputy command role you came back for became the role of Chief Staff Officer of the Mining and Clearance Diver Group?
Yes.
And this was around 2008?
Yes, yes.
And in broad terms, what's the work of that group?
So really, that was about being responsible to the Navy for the delivery of the mine clearance diving capability, which was everything from the six mine hunters, the mine sweepers that we had, the two clearance diving teams, the six reserve teams, and then also to act as head of category and head of branch for the clearance diving and mine warfare community and then also as Chair of Dive Safe.
Now, can you explain to commissioners what Dive Safe is?
Dive Safe is a diving regulatory authority that is responsible for ensuring the safe conduct of all diving operations. It is ensuring that the regulations are correct, but then most importantly, responding to and investigating all diving-related injuries and accidents.
So as a consequence of your role as Chief Staff Officer of the Mining and Clearance Diver Group, you were also Chair of Dive Safe?
Yes, I was.
And can Dive Safe undertake its own investigations?
They can undertake their own investigations.
And am I right to understand those investigations will relate, for example, to particular incidents that occur when involved in diving?
Every reported incident, yes.
And how is a reported incident defined?
So generally, it's, yeah, and within the culture of clearance diving, if there is an incident or a near miss, it's, there's procedures by which it's raised formally and then it's, there's timelines that it has to be investigated by Dive Safe.
And is Dive Safe able to make recommendations?
They are able to make recommendations and also implement changes within their authority.
And what is the limit of their authority, at least in your time, to implement changes?
So what I found was we were able to implement policy directly with stopping diving operations because of concerns with equipment to changing minor procedures. Anything major had to be referred back up through Fleet Command, such as we were not able to implement some of the changes that were recommended us from COMCARE following a shark attack.
Now, I'm going to come to that in a minute, but just to make sure I understand it, so there are lower-level recommendations that Dive Safe can itself implement, but anything beyond that has to go up the level of the chain of command?
Yes.
And it is within the power of the chain of command to implement those higher-level recommendations?
Yes, it is.
Now, you touched there just on a COMCARE investigation, so am I right to understand it that lower-level incidents might be investigated by Dive Safe, but more significant incidents fall within the sphere of responsibility of COMCARE?
Yeah, we're governed by the Occupational Health and Safety Acts, Commonwealth and the various state ones and if COMCARE will be called in too significant.
But does Dive Safe still, in a more significant incident, retain a role as a first responder?
It does.
And what does that first responder role involve?
Generally, it's an investigation and I would offer if it was diving equipment that had been faulty, it's to get the right technical expertise in, you know, it would be immediately to stop diving that class of equipment. It would be then to bring somebody in to assess what actually went wrong with that specific equipment to look at whether it was human error, whether it was a standard operating procedure error, or whether it was a technical fault with the diving equipment and then look at how we do that. And also, more recently, you know, provide counselling to the people that were involved in that incident, but that's a fairly new aspect.
So its core function as a first responder is really to take immediate action where it's needed, both to protect the mental health of others, but also the risk exposed by the incident so that a subsequent more in-depth investigation can take place. Now, you mentioned one incident that occurred while you were Chair of Dive Safe was a shark attack on a clearance diver. That was in 2009?
Yes, 2009.
And during that shark attack, clearance diver Paul Degelder suffered catastrophic injuries, but his life was saved. Are you able to tell commissioners how his life was saved? Is that something you have knowledge of?
His life was saved, can be unequivocally, was the actions of the clearance diving supervisor and his support team that were on site that used a makeshift tornique on Paul. They had also conducted diver medical technician training previously where they were put into a high level of medical training, which included working in hospitals, working in emergency and day theatre to learn the basics of suturing and life-saving skills and the other actions that they took to treat Paul on site. And then, I think, then also the fact that he was so close to St Vincent's Hospital that they were able to get him there very quickly.
And do you know the direct supervisor who was there on the scene on the day?
I do.
And is he here to give evidence today as well?
The supervisor's not, but one of the other staff are.
And who is the other staff there?
Jeremy Thomas.
Now, in your statement, you express a very positive view of the investigation that was conducted by COMCARE. Can you explain to commissioners why?
So the COMCARE investigation was extremely thorough and led us to change the way we do business and the example I would give is that they investigated how we assessed the risk of shark attack on that day and in my interview with them, I kept saying, well, we hadn't had a shark attack since 1952 in Sydney Harbour and they said, yes, but how did you assess the risk? And they forced us to look at ourselves and say, well, how do we actually look at the factors that increase the probability of a shark being there, such as water temperature, turbidity, you know, fresh water outflow, et cetera. And we therefore changed our procedures, but they also looked at the success factors and looked at what actually saved Paul's life, which was the tornique, the medical training and the high level of training of the divers on site.
And am I right to understand those particular things, the tornique and the diver medical technician course formed the basis of two recommendations?
They did.
From COMCARE. And just to be clear in relation to the torniques, am I right to understand it that there was no actual tornique on the boat, a makeshift one was used on the day?
There was a makeshift tornique, yes.
And so the recommendation of COMCARE was that there be a proper tornique available in all first aid kits. Were those recommendations implemented by Navy?
They were not, they were overridden by Fleet Medical Officer.
And did you have any involvement in the discussions with Fleet Headquarters about the implementation of those recommendations?
I did.
And can you give commissioners an overview of that involvement and perhaps the involvement of others amongst the clearance diver community that you were aware of?
So I was held accountable for implementing the COMCARE recommendations and we had to report monthly on the completion of the recommendations. The two that did not get completed were the tornique, the recommendation was to put a combat tornique, which all personnel who deploy to combat operations receive about thirty minutes' worth of training on before they deploy. The reasoning given was that the Fleet Medical Officer believed that there was a higher risk of untrained personnel using torniques. I argued that the most catastrophic incidents that can happen on a dive site are a propeller injury or a shark attack, or in the Northern Waters, a crocodile attack. And, but that was overridden and the second one was that the diver medical technician training, again, the medical officer believed that it was training people to a standard where they were not a trained medic and therefore put us in a dangerous situation where they had enough knowledge but not enough knowledge, if you know what I mean.
Were you party to any discussions between Jeremy Thomas and members of Fleet Headquarters about those recommendations?
Not directly, but through the process of doing the Clearance Diver Trust submission, was made aware of those discussions, yes.
Okay. Coming back to Mr Degelder, was that incident the end of his career as a clearance diver?
No, it was not. We made a conscious decision to return Paul to as far as diving operations that he could be, noting his medical injuries and the fact that he would be able to then, you know, get to a standard and then decide his career options after that.
And what impact did that incident and perhaps more specifically, the decision not to implement the recommendations arising out of that incident have on you?
I felt let down that I was not in a position to be able to make the dive safe a hundred percent, sorry, dive site safe a hundred percent in accordance with objective evidence that had been offered to us in response to an incident. As a leader and head of category, I felt that I wasn't being listened to with the concerns and I believe there was objective evidence that was taking us down that path but was being overridden through the chain of command.
And I'm struck by what you just said there and correct me if I'm wrong about this, you spoke about the inability to make the site safe. Did that inability weigh on you?
It did and it was a constant source of discussion at, you know, at group meetings and when I would go and address the clearance diving teams and, yeah, and I am of the belief that it actually led to a number of resignations.
Now, I want to move forward and talk, and you've touched on this in a little bit of detail already, but the combat deployments you went on in Afghanistan, again, I'm not going to ask you about the operational nature of those deployments, but you speak in your statement about a number of traumatic experiences you had during those deployments. I think you've touched on it in a little bit of detail, but can I ask you to give commissioners an overview of the impact those incidents had on you personally?
I think the impacts, from a personal point of view, you're exposed to trauma on a, almost daily basis on some of the deployments, both in person and then on screens where you're directing and correcting operations. You are losing people out of your unit. My last deployment, we lost a significant number of American cohort and also our partnered forces that we had been training. And I think you come out of a combat operation with a very different sense of reality, you're hypervigilant, you have an extreme focus on what you are doing and then when you come home, it doesn't seem relevant and what you're doing, your relationships suffer. You, I'm lucky I don't drink and I think that it's, yeah, your relationships suffer, your focus suffers and I think that there's a number of risk factors that you're exposed to that you don't really understand and it takes, I think, understanding through other people that have been through the same thing, you know, and when you realise they're experiencing the same emotions and problems that you realise that, well, you're not weak.
And was that how you felt about yourself when you came back? You know, you talk about that feeling of not understanding your emotions and self-characterising them as weak, was that your own experience?
Totally, and I think my last deployment, I was, you know, I was gone for twelve and twelve and a half months and just the tempo you're working, what we were doing and came home and I was going a thousand miles an hour, was detached from my family, friends, partners, it's, yeah, it's, you don't really understand what's happening and you think you're normal and that they're not. And I think that it takes time and that's one of the recommendations I made was that those tick and flick psych assessments are too soon after you come home and there's no ongoing maintenance of you then.
So what do you think psychological assessments should look like?
I think a psychological assessment needs to be more, less of a tick and flick and a more of a conversation and a, you know, a direction of what you will experience, tools to actually make you more, to make the recovery process better. And I think that includes, you know, that there should be more pre-silience going into these operations and what to expect, what to do when you experience these and I think, in my statement, I said that when I talked about the specific incidents, I was just told, yes, that is a normal reaction and you will get over it and you don't.
Yeah. And so, you know, on reflection, do you think if you'd been armed with the skills to understand what you might be experiencing and when you should be seeking help, that might have had a better outcome for you?
I think it would contribute to it, anything's got to be better than what we got.
Now, one of the things that happened during your second deployment in 2019 is you received an email telling you to contact Careers about your next posting. Can you tell commissioners about that experience?
Yes, so I was about three-quarters of the way through my deployment and was told to contact my career poster back in Australia to discuss my next posting. I was told that the Navy really didn't have any further work for me on return to Australia and it would be too hard to employ me back here because I've been so specialised in the clearance diving world and particularly the global war on terror and therefore a compulsory transfer to the reserves could be in, you know, one of the possible solutions.
What impact did that have on you, I guess first, receiving that news that you were sort of too specialised to continue to be a full-time service, but secondly, receiving that news while you're on deployment?
I felt gutted that I'd given so much to that, particularly the last 10 years had been very focused on the fire. Particularly, the, the last ten years had been very focused on, on the fight in Afghanistan and Iraq and, um, the jobs that I had, uh, undertaken, that Defence told me to undertake. Um, uh, because of the shore part, or the, uh, non-operational postings I had were actually focused on those, yeah, those areas. Uh, I also felt, um, that, um, really I had wasted the last ten years and that why was I not worthy of further employment with the Navy?
Did that impact your mental health?
It did.
And, and only if you feel comfortable, can you, can you tell commissioners about that?
So, uh, yeah, yeah, I had to park it aside for a while. Okay, well, that's the, the, the decision and then obviously you're, you're still in a war zone, you're still, uh, and I, I think in context, yeah, whilst we were in a headquarters position, we were rocketed seventy-eight times. We had lost twenty-eight people, um, of our own, um, it's, sorry, twenty-eight Americans and three NATO partners. We'd lost three hundred and fifty Afghan partners. Um, we were, uh, in a very, uh, kinetic period in Afghanistan. Um, and, uh, to then be told that, well, you, you've been doing this and we don't really have a career for you when you get home, um, was gutting. And, um, I, I felt that I shouldn't have been put in that situation to discuss that while I was in a war zone. Uh, and, and I think that, um, that we, yeah, the conversation could have happened later on. Um, and what, after I'd got home, but it, it happened and the decision was made and, um, the, the, the direction was received that I would be compulsory transferred when I returned to Australia.
Now, uh, so when, when did you actually receive the formal notice and from whom?
So I, I, I can't remember the exact date, but it was, it was probably, I think it was around September because the, the, the day sticks in my mind because it was the day we, we'd just lost our drive team, um, to an improvised explosive device. Um, and, uh, the, uh, the, it was a, uh, email, um, saying letter enclosed for your action, um, from the Deputy Chief of Navy.
So on the one hand, you're at the forefront of Australia's efforts, um, in Afghanistan, but at the same time you receive this letter. Um, what impact did receiving that letter from the Chief of Navy have on you?
It, I, again, I, I felt, eh, there, there were two options, eh, eh, I felt gutted that I was going down that path, but, um, eh, eh, or at least I knew my, my path and, and having a compulsory transfer is better than a, 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 just a straight discharge because there are some benefits associated with it, but, uh, but I, uh, what, what struck me the most was that there was no discussion, um, after thirty, at that stage, thirty-six years in the, in the Navy, that, um, there was a handwritten note on the, um, uh, the covering sheet to the, that saying that Captain Maylie is to be, um, this has been to be discussed in person with him, um, or it wasn't discussed with me, it was just emailed to me.
Did you of your own initiative discuss these issues further with the Deputy Chief of Navy?
I, I discussed it with a different Deputy Chief of Navy on, on return to, to Australia. Um, uh, my discharge was subsequently put on hold because of the requirement to put me in the, when I got home, to go into the, as a, into the counter COVID task force. Um, and then, uh, a, a bit later on, um, it was again put on hold because I was diagnosed with cancer. Um, and, uh, I asked for an audience with the Deputy Chief of Navy, um, and discussed my treatment with him, yes.
And were you satisfied by the outcome of that discussion?
It, it was just a discussion and he just acknowledged my input and there was, there was no further, no further discussion.
What was your experience of transition?
My, my experience in transition from, there, there's two aspects to it. Um, I, I was worked after by Army, um, where I was subsequently serving, um, and, and they were outstanding. Um, my treatment from Navy in my whole transition process, um, after being diagnosed with cancer, um, and, uh, then going through that transition process. The only two outreachers I had from Navy were the, uh, executive officer, or some commanding officer of HMS Harman, questioning why I had so much leave, um, and that they were going to probably investigate me for leave fraud, um, until I pointed out that all my leave had been medical because of the, the cancer. Um, and then, uh, emails from my post of wanting to know when I would be of a medical status that I could be, um, separated.
And, and how many years of service have you given at this point?
Uh, thirty-eight years and ten months.
And what impact did that have on you?
I, I think that was devastating.
Now, Mr. Maylie, um, you have subsequently become very actively involved in the clearance diver community and the work of the Navy Clearance Diver Trust. What prompted you to take that step?
There, there, there were a number of, um, I, I, I think the, the three suicides that we had, um, uh, all those guys had worked, well, I say for me, but with me, um, uh, at, at many stages. And I, I knew one of them very well, um, and I knew that something just had to be done. Uh, and, and I think, uh, particularly after the last one, uh, and, um, you know, and then when the, the trust actually stood up at the funeral and said, we are going to take a proactive approach. Um, three people from a branch that's got two hundred and fifty in it, i- is way too many. Um, and then anecdotally, we'd heard of many other attempted, uh, and then attempted suicides and then also, uh, the, the broader mental health issues across the community. Um, so as a former leader, I thought it was a moral responsibility to contribute to that. Um, and, uh, I saw that the, the CDT Trust was actually doing something positive, um, to, to look at outcomes, um, both, uh, in raising money to support people in distress, but then also to actually look at what are the root causes of distress and what can we actually do to implement changes to de-risk the future for these young men and women of the Clarence Diving Branch and the broader defence.
Now, the, the submission made by the Trust is in ev- in evidence. Um, just by virtue of its sheer size, you can see it's no small undertaking. Um, Ms. Goldsworthy gave evidence that it was an exercise of six clearance divers together with her over a period of six months, pulling all this together. Can you give commissioners just a sense of, of what the work was involved? And the steps you took to ensure as best as you could the robustness of the information and data in there?
Yeah, so, so we, uh, first of all, we had a, can I still call them, they were a QC at that stage, not a KC. Um, so, um, working, uh, with us to, to advise us, um, on how we, um, the, how we should proceed with the, the type of evidence. We employed a survey specialist, um, to help us design a survey, um, that we would put out to current and ex, uh, serving clearance divers. Uh, we also involved Edith Cowan University, I think it was. Um, and we designed the survey over a number of meetings, um, and then we pushed the, the survey out. Um, the survey was subsequently, um, after we'd, I think we'd interviewed maybe a hu- we had maybe a hundred and fifty responses. Um, we were, the Clearance Diving Association, um, put a stop to, um, publishing the link for us, saying that they had concerns that we hadn't gone through the military process and ethics committee for doing a survey. Uh, we then, um, started analysing the data, um, and, and what were the common factors. Uh, Denise would put it out to, um, relevant subject matter experts to see what the data meant from a, just a quantitative analysis point of view. And then we were able to provide perspective as the six, you know, Clarence Diver input into it and then also relate to, um, our own personal experiences. Uh, so the, 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 the report, um, offers a num- a number of opinions, um, from, uh, the surveys. Uh, whilst a hundred and fifty would have been better to get more, we regarded that as statistically relevant. Um, but what was actually raised in the subject matter, um, would then, we would then look further into and are referred there to, you know, the eighty-five percent of, uh, medical separations in one year. And I think it, it fluctuated, it averaged about sixty-five percent of separations were medical. So there's an issue there. Um, uh, so we, we then also looked at what studies had been done, uh, through our five eyes partners, uh, equivalent. Uh, and we then, uh, would seek advice on that. And so it was probably greater than a six-month process by, you know, wh- when we finally got the report out. Um, and, uh, so I would say it's a, it's a, it's a mixture of quantitative analysis, uh, subjective analysis, and then, um, some, uh, you know, putting it into perspective by the, the diverse range of experiences of the six Clarence Divers that we had advising the Trust.
And, um, and I appreciate it won't be possible in answering this question to do complete justice to the complexity of the work that is involved in the submission. But in broad terms, what does the submission show about links between service as a clearance diver and adverse mental health, um, outcomes and suicidality?
There, there is, there, there, there would appear to be a definite link. Um, there, there is a high number of proven, um, attempted suicides. There were expressions of suicide ideation in the responses. Um, there were, uh, uh, and then obviously evidence going back. There wa- wasn't just the three suicides that we'd had in, in that one year. There, there was, I think, eight all up, uh, over a, a period of about a decade. Um, there, there was a definite link to mental health issues, uh, just purely statistically, um, from the separations and now from PTSD, from, uh, trauma, um, depression, anxiety, um, substance abuse, and all that data was, um, a mixture of what was available from the surveys and then the research we were able to do.
A- and does the submission proffer any views about the risk factors for adverse mental health outcomes and suicidality amongst clearance diver cohort?
It, 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 anecdotally, it, it, it says that there is a increased risk, um, of, um, you know, of, of mental health issues because of the service you do. And some of the things we looked at were just the, the everyday activities the Clarence Divers do being dangerous and, and you get that constant exposure, the high performance requirements continually. Um, eh, similar to, you know, and I think we, we analysed, um, you know, high performance sports as an example. Um, the, and, uh, then also the constant exposure, um, to, um, you know, to trauma. And I think the, the variety of the experiences that were amongst the six people that were advising Denise, um, ranged from people that had been deployed to Indonesia and Thailand after the tsunami, to people that had done body recup- multiple body recoveries, to people who had done multiple deployments to Afghanistan and Iraq, um, and people who had dealt with improvised explosive devices on a daily basis when they were deployed.
A- and, and is the reason for your emphasis of that, um, that in terms of those sort of six advisers for the submission, there is a breadth of experience in terms of the types of trauma that a clearance diver can be exposed to?
Mo- most definitely, and it's not just related to war zones. Um, and so I offered the, you know, the, the examples of the tsunami, um, the body recoveries. So, eh, eh, in their everyday da- day employment, there are other stressors that would apply that aren't, aren't relevant across the, the broader Navy.
What about the links between physical injury and medical separation and adverse mental health outcomes?
There, there was definitely, again, a link to that. There was a extremely high rate of physical inju- injury, which because of the classification of medical status, um, meaning that they couldn't be employed within the Clarence Diving Branch, that they had to separate. Um, and that sense of separate, one of the common themes that came through, that separation from a community of like-minded people, a support mechanism and support network, um, where they were now in employment that they didn't really want to be in, um, was causing problems. Um, and they felt that, you know, one of the, one of the key risk factors that was identified was separation from that community.
A- and I'm just struck, sort of hearing you talk about that now, to the earlier evidence you gave about the University of Wollongong project and how it was looking at, as I understand it, um, really protective factors in terms of resilience to physical injury. Um, I, I guess, seeing the data that came forth from that submission and knowing about those kinds of efforts you've been involved in, do you think that's one type of step that really might have assisted?
I, I think much definitely.
Now, the submission was obviously made to the Royal Commission, but it was also given to the Chief of Navy. Um, did you receive a response from the Chief of Navy?
So Denise received it a- as the Chairman of the, the, the Trust. Um, she received the, uh, on, on the day that we were actually going into a private session, um, with the, um, Commissioners. Um, we received, uh, via email, um, which I think you read that out. So the decision to give that to Chief of Navy, we deliberated over quite lengthy and we, we saw that, that we wanted to be transparent, um, and to show that this just wasn't an uneducated opinion and that we wanted Navy to be aware. And I think because some of the issues that had come up needed, in our view, required investigation right away. Um, so we deliberately said that we would take this to Chief of Navy. Um, and then we received that letter from Admiral Noonan.
A- and I might just bring that letter up if I can. Operator, can you please display Tinder bundle document number B? It's, um, D E G dot triple, sorry, quadruple zero dot triple zero one dot triple zero one. While that's coming up, um, you obviously have done an MBA.
Yes.
So would I be right to say an aspect of your study, um, as a Masters of Business Administration is issues connected with governance and accountability?
Yes.
So you have a sort of level of professional qualification that gives you a perspective on what you would expect a proper governance system to look like?
Yes.
Now, the letter will come up in due course, but I take it there's no, um, you know its contents.
Yes.
A- and can you tell commissioners the effect of what the letter said?
I, I'll, I'll speak for myself, we, I, I, we were shocked, um, that what we thought we had raised, um, were, we'd put objective evidence, eh, eh, with some subjective, um, a- assessment, um, up to, um, the, the, the Chief of Navy. Um, and we felt that we were just being dismissed, um, and, uh, that because we'd chosen to design the survey through a university ethics process, not through the military ethics process, that that was not a reason to reject the findings and the recommendations. Um, they, and we, I think we were to a T, each of us were shocked that that letter came out and particularly as we were going into the, the private session.
A- and can you just, um, could you just outline for commissioners? Well, actually, I, I might just put to you what the letter said and you can disagree with me if I'm wrong. Um, the letter recorded that while the submission contains information, the Defence would have an interest in exploring fur- further. There are strict guidelines within the department that need to be followed when conducting activities of this nature that involve serving ADF members. Just putting your MBA hat on a- and that professional expertise you have in governance and accountability, do you think that is a response that reflects a governance system within the ADF that prioritises the health and safety of its members as a governance issue?
I, I definitely think it's a governance issue, um, that, you know, the, the priority here should have been that the information articulates that there are risk factors for personnel. How we came to that, there might have been, uh, issues with how we came to it, but what should have been addressed were the, the, uh, the issues that we've highlighted, um, foremost because there are risk factors highlighted in that report.
So what would you have expected, um, of a governance system that prioritises the health and safety of its members, receiving that report, that submission?
I, I would have expected, uh, immediate dialogue with us, um, to, uh, understand, you know, what we had uncovered, how we'd uncovered it and, um, to, uh, work with us on solutions, uh, you know, because that's what the Trust wanted, that it was to look for solutions, not to finger point. It was just to de-risk the future of the Clarence Diving Branch.
Sorry, Miss Longbottom, could we just play that letter up so it's more clear for everyone?
Of, of course. Um, could I ask, operator, could you please expand, um, the first three paragraphs of the letter?
Thank you.
Mr. Maylie, did you or are you aware of whether any members of the Trust had any, received any subsequent engagement with Navy about the issues that were raised in the submission?
Uh, I did. I did not, and I'm aware that Denise has had continuing discussions with the head of the clearance diving branch about how we might proceed. And she's actually taken action to submit the survey results and process through the Navy processes. I'm not sure where that stands. And she's had continuing discussions with some of the military members that were former heads of the branch.
So am I right to understand you to be saying she has proactively then tried to jump through the steps that were identified in this letter to progress?
Yeah, yes, she had, and that's a conversation I had with her two days ago.
But what about, have you, has there been any engagement of substance proactively from Fleet Headquarters or the Chief of Navy?
Not that I'm aware, and as I said, I've been working within an Army unit.
Now, you say in your statement that this response you received was the reason you decided to make a personal submission. What do you mean by that?
Because I was shocked that we had put in a lot of effort. And what I, if I'd received something like this as Head of Dive Safe or Head of my diving community, I would have felt compelled to act on it. I feel morally compelled to de-risk the future of the clearance diving branch because they're people that I've worked with for a long time. There will be future conflicts, there will be future incidents of where we require a capability that puts the right people out there, and we need to look after them. And I, I felt that that letter was not right. And I was borderline on whether or not I would actually come forward as a witness after the process, but that actually cemented it for me.
And what do you hope to achieve by coming here to give evidence today?
To raise that there is a uniqueness in clearance diver employment and training that needs to be recognised and de-risked. And we need to look at pre resilience, resilience and recovery through a different lens than that that covers and involves the whole of Navy, which is very good at dealing with ships that deploy to areas and is very good at, you know, doing standardisation for a broader Navy. But clearance divers are unique, not for any other reason than the actual employment that Defence has asked them to do for the last, you know, 20 to 30 years.
I don't have any further questions, Mr. Maile. Thank you, thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Miss Longbottom. Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Maile. I just wanted to ask you in relation to, first of all, the recommendations following the shark attack and the two recommendations that weren't implemented. Just want to clarify, was there any opportunity for you to have a further discussion with the Fleet Medical Officer who had overridden those recommendations?
There was not, I was subsequently, at the end of two, sorry, midway through 2011, I was deployed to Afghanistan. And that was handed over to my successor. But there was no opportunity to discuss it beyond the probably two to three face to faces that we had. And we kept elevating the fact that we could not implement the recommendations based on the decision of the Fleet Medical Officer, and that was pushed up to Fleet Headquarters.
So what's the highest level it got to in terms of escalation?
I believe it would have gone to the Fleet Commander.
But there was no variation to the decision? Okay. I just want to ask then about your deployment that you talked about. You said, if I heard you correctly, you had 12 and a half months on deployment in Afghanistan?
Yes, ma'am.
Was that in one deployment?
Yes, ma'am, yep.
Okay, I thought there was a recognised limit to the time or a recommended limit to the time spent on deployment.
I believe that's standard. The deployments can range from, you know, the four to 12, or just over 12 months.
Okay, so you spent 12 and a half months there, and was it when you came back that you had that psych assessment where you were told you had a normal reaction and you'll get over it? Or was that a different deployment?
That happened on both deployments. There was one significant incident on the 2011 deployment that I expressed concern about. And then, again, that expression was given to me in my second psych interview when I got home, the last deployment.
And was there any kind of evidence from your observation, any evidence of any concern expressed when you were told you'll get over it?
No, that's when I sought help outside the Defence System.
Was there any follow up from the psych assessment? So despite the fact that you had told them you'd had some issues, it was just deemed to be normal and there was nothing?
Yeah, and then I was subsequently diagnosed with PTSD. And, but Defence did not do any follow up.
And then the circumstances of you receiving that correspondence when you were in Afghanistan about the compulsory transfer to reserves, and 38 years and 10 months, which I have to say is an extraordinary career. It's an extraordinary way to have it end. Did you at least get a thank you for your service?
Uh, no.
I have to say, I wish I could be surprised by that, but given how many times I've heard the answer no to that question, I have to say I'm not surprised. You spoke a couple of times about, when you talked about the studies and the submission by the trust, you talked about looking at what our Five Eyes partners have done in this space. Do they, from your, kind of what your knowledge, do they do it better than what we do here in Australia in terms of?
I think they put more resources to it, and in particular, and I'm only talking from my experiences through a clearance diving lens, is that the equivalent capabilities with our Five Eyes partners are regarded as a unique capability, and they invest more resources into that pre resilience, resilience and recovery in recognition of that being a unique capability. We do not tend to do that within our Navy. We get, you know, under that broad envelope of, it's everybody in the Navy is treated the same, you know, must have the same standards, must have the same. It's not regarded as a unique capability with different risk factors.
And what, practically what could be done differently? You say pre resilience, resilience, recovery. I get those kind of broad headings. But in practical terms, you know, for example, when people are on deployment, what could be done that could make it better or, you know, improved?
I think the, as a Navy person, your parent's service should be actually concerned with you when you're deployed. But then also, I think that the mechanisms in country to help you with issues and administratively are outstanding, and they're joint. But I think it's not so much when you are in country, it's when you return. And in particular, you know, the service taking the responsibility, because there's a very big, you know, we are a joint force, but we're also, we're very tribal. And the services own the people, and therefore they should take responsibility for their people. The service makes a decision to put them into a joint environment. And then when they come back, there should be more effort put into, you know, the recognition and ongoing. And I think very much pre resilience is a big thing with our Five Eyes partners. In clearance diving, you know, years have passed, we used to go to the morgue before you were exposed to seeing bodies in the water as a pre resilience. That doesn't happen anymore. The, you know, expecting what to actually come away from a deployment with as a regard to a generic one from a person that's going to be sitting in a headquarters position is very different. So I think the Five Eyes, and particularly the Americans, are more resourced. But they're very good at sharing the information with us as well.
Okay, and my final question is, after 38 years and 10 months, there was no other role you could do in the Navy?
That's what I was told. And so I've subsequently working within Army now as a reservist. And, yeah, but the letter I received was that there are no further employment opportunities for Captain Maile within the Navy.
I just find that so almost incomprehensible, but thank you very much for your evidence today.
Thank you. Commissioner Douglas?
Mr. Maile, you discharged as a captain in the Navy, I gather?
Yes.
Is that a high rank for someone who's been a clearance diver?
Yes, yeah, we are a very small branch, so, you know, it's a particularly long road to get to captain.
Was anybody higher ranking than you in the clearance divers?
Well, there's no clearance diver billets above captain, but there are most definitely clearance divers that have made it to, you know, three star.
At your stage, when you finished, was anybody higher ranking than you?
Yes, yeah, as clearance divers, but they weren't doing clearance diver jobs. They were doing general service yet.
So following on from what Commissioner Brown asked, one might expect that there could be a job for someone with your experience, even if not actively as a clearance diver?
Yeah, I would have thought so.
Yes. Reverting to another topic, you're talking about the assistance available after you came off deployment and said on the whole that it was a tick and flick exercise. Did any of the psychologists who were conducting that exercise appear to have particular knowledge of clearance divers' types of deployments?
I do not believe so.
Do you have any psychologists in the Navy associated with looking after clearance divers in particular?
In the past, we use psychologists on the selection process for the clearance diver acceptance test. We actually had a psychologist there for the duration of the testing.
But how about during engagement and deployment?
No, no.
My understanding is that with the Army Special Forces, there are embedded psychologists on bases. Is that your understanding?
It's my understanding, yes.
But none in naval bases looking after clearance divers?
No.
That's fine.
Well, I leave that topic and go on with another topic. You were also asked, Miss Longbottom, about the information that the Navy Clearance Divers Trust gave to Rear Admiral Noonan, to Vice Admiral Noonan, who was then the Chief of Navy, and that it was in effect not followed up because it didn't use military procedures in ascertaining the information that Edith Gahan University used university procedures for. I understand your evidence says that Miss Goldsworthy is issuing further inquiries in that respect, but has there ever been any positive response from the Navy offering, for example, to repeat the fact finding techniques using their own procedures?
Not to my knowledge.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Maile. I just need to mention that the evidence we're hearing today is quite tough. This evidence that refers to suicide and suicide behaviours, catastrophic physical injuries and deaths. So if anyone is struggling, I just urge you to contact our staff, either if you're here physically or if you're watching this on live stream. All the support services are available on our website. Please have a look and utilise them if you need to. It is a tough subject, but we need to have these conversations. And I just have a couple of issues I wanted to raise, Mr. Maile. Firstly, you talked very modestly about defusing improvised explosive devices in various places, but you didn't make it clear, and I just want to clarify, you weren't operating in a pristine environment. It would have been a kinetic environment with further risks of secondary explosions and perhaps snipers and so on. That's the case?
Yes, it is, yep.
Thank you. The second issue is just in relation to the follow up that both Commissioner Brown and Commissioner Douglas mentioned. So I want to clarify that not only was there no specific tailored post operational debriefing that related specifically to your role. Is that right?
Correct.
It was a standard sort of one. And you mentioned that it was almost immediately after. The ones that occurred were immediately after your deployment. I gathered you felt that perhaps a further debriefing further down the track, maybe three and six months later, would be helpful, not just immediately afterwards?
So we do have one three months, obviously have the immediate one and then three months. My assessment was that the immediate one was too immediate.
Okay, thank you. The other point I wanted to make is that one of your recommendations, which are all very helpful, I have to say, one of them relates to that under no circumstances should serving personnel be forced to consider transition and be given adverse feedback on their career while they're serving in a war zone. Do you know if anything has changed in that space that you're aware of?
I do not know.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Miss Longbottom?
Nothing further, Commissioner Caldis. May Mr. Maile be excused from his summons.
Thank you. Mr. Maile, thank you for your evidence. Thank you for the preparation of your evidence. We know it's tough to relieve a lot of these issues, but we can't thank you enough. It's very, very helpful for us and it's very much appreciated. And thank you for your service. Your excuse from his summons to appear. If there's nothing else, Miss Longbottom will adjourn briefly.
Thank you, Commissioner Caldis.
All rise. The Royal Commission into Defence and Veteran Suicide will adjourn till 11:15. The Royal Commission into Defence and Veteran Suicide is now resumed. Please be seated.
Thank you, Miss Longbottom.
Thank you, Commissioner Caldis. I call Ashley Simmons.
Do you, Ashley Simmons, solemnly declare and affirm that the evidence you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Simmons, can you please state your full name?
Ashley Drew Simmons.
And you are a veteran Navy clearance diver?
That's right.
Now, you've provided a statement to the Royal Commission dated twenty-nine June twenty-twenty-three?
That's correct.
And I understand there's a correction you want to make to paragraph thirty-seven of your statement?
That's right, change from Private Paul DeGelder to April Semen, Paul DeGelder.
With that correction, is the statement true and correct to the best of your knowledge and belief?
Yes.
Operator, can you please display the tender bundle? Commissioners, I tender the documents identified in the list in the manner in which they are described.
Thank you, Miss Longbottom. They'll be accepted into evidence and allocated the next lot of numbers.
Now, Mr. Simmons, you grew up here in South Australia?
That's correct.
Did you come from a military family?
No, had no real military experience within any of my family.
And I understand from your statement that you were a pretty good swimmer when you were growing up?
Yeah, once upon a time, I spent quite a significant amount of time swimming, surf life-saving surfing, with the grand dreams of one day following that as a career.
So what led you to ultimately shift course and pursue career as a Navy clearance diver?
Got to the point where being an amateur, trying to move into a professional sport wasn't going the way. I just didn't have the, I guess, the ability to cut it down to what it is. I had the skills and experience from being in those marine environments for basically my whole life. That led me down the track to sort of pursue something that would continue that role. And the way that the clearance diving role was advertised appealed to me as a young man at the time.
So you wanted to keep that connection with the maritime environment?
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, I was, it's something that I'm still passionate about. I love being in and around the water. So what better job to go and effectively spend my life there?
Now, am I right? You joined the military as a direct entry clearance diver?
That's right. I joined at nineteen, yeah, direct entry.
And about when was that?
February two thousand and five, I joined.
Now, you say in your statement that it takes about eighteen months from entry to become qualified as a Navy clearance diver?
That's right. I guess from day one, when you joined the Navy, we moved down to Cerberus and conducted our initial training. We'll go on and do some low-level specialising courses at Cerberus, weapons, seamanship, those sort of things. And then we'll progress up to HMAS Penguin, which is the home of the clearance diving school.
And sort of one of the steps in that process is a selection course?
That's right. So at the time, my selection course was called the Clearance Diver Acceptance Test, or CDAT, it's quite well known. And that was a between ten to fourteen day selection test.
And can you explain to the commissioners what the purpose of that selection test is, to the best of your knowledge and understanding?
Sure. So that selection is designed to strip the individuals down to their, I guess, their core core being and test them both physically and mentally in some challenging positions to assess if they are able to then progress into what will be a more complex environment during clearance diving class course and future employment.
And how many people did you start the selection course with?
My selection started with around, I believe, twenty-ish.
And how many did you finish up with?
Off the top of my head, I think it was eleven, so we lost nine-ish through that process. So it was around a sort of a fifty percent loss rate.
And what was your experience of that initial sort of ten-some days selection course?
Looked for me, I thoroughly enjoyed it. I was, again, lucky to rely on that time that I'd spent in and around the water. So I was quite comfortable in that scenario. However, it's a test designed to break you down individually. So there's mechanisms within that to get me to that position. So it definitely broke me down to my core being as well.
Now, you know, with the benefit of having now had many more years' experience as a clearance diver, do you see a selection course of that type having merit in terms of giving you the base skill sets you needed to progress through the ranks?
Definitely. We look at the role that the clearance divers undertake. It is a high-pressure sort of employment. So to then be able to screen people prior to putting them into that scenario situation, being a twelve-to-eighteen-month-long course, that is a mechanism to keep those people progressing safe.
And you talk about, I'm struck by the expression you use, you were sort of stripped to your core. Why do you see that as being important as a precursor to going through the next training course?
Simply, as I alluded to, due to the pressure and the stress that this course and then further employment will put these people under. So I give a situation of working with explosives underwater and your dive set either fails or you've consumed the amount of gas that's within your cylinder. So that is quite a stressful scenario to be in that I've personally been in. So to be able to act within and maintain my presence of mind to keep myself safe and therefore the rest of the team safe.
We heard evidence earlier today from Mr. Maile, you know Mr. Maile?
I do, yes.
And one of, or two of the concepts he mentioned were pre-silience and resilience. Are they sort of concepts that resonate with you in terms of that concept of being stripped down to your core?
Yeah, very much, particularly pre-silience. There is, there's only one way to get that, and that's doing hard things, or being exposed to hard things in a controlled environment. Because at some stage during your career, it's not going to be a controlled environment. So if you can maintain that presence of mind and have that confidence that you know you can operate in that sort of environment, then it goes a long way to keeping that person on track and safe.
Now, the next step in the process, and you've touched on this a little bit, is the clearance diver training course. How long is that course?
So that's, that package consists of around five to six, depending on the iteration at the time, of smaller packages within, and it goes generally between nine and twelve months, depending on sort of when it starts to when it finishes.
And what was your experience of that course and your observations of the experiences of your peers?
My experiences were varied from some really good training to some really poor practices in ensuring that we learn what we need to learn at an appropriate pace. I'll expand on that by saying that there was significant punishment applied to the students, myself, when we didn't, weren't assessed as being up to scratch. And those sort of punishments were generally physical push-ups, what we would call run jumps at the time, which is effectively circuit training, you could say forced circuit training, and so on.
And so you talked earlier about, you know, the need to be pre-silient and being able to deal with sort of difficult situations. What do you see as being the line in the sand between those types of practices you've spoken about being not good and actually poor? Why don't they help build your pre-resilience or your resilience?
Look, I've sort of given the two examples, one being a very controlled environment, being a selection process, and then one being a twelve-month course, which is, I guess, less, there's less oversight on that course. So there is more of a free rein for instructors to, I guess, take take things into their own hands in terms of how they provide retraining or punishment.
And what impact did that retraining or punishment aspect of the training course have on you?
Look, being, having lived quite a physical life, I had some level of enjoyment with, I expected it was going to be a hard job, a hard course. What I don't see as beneficial or positive to people that are in that position is instructors' egos taking over, relying on this is the way that we've always done it, so we'll continue doing it that way. There's no, I guess, evolution of training to a better, a better level.
Now, you touch on this in your statement, but you speak about some of your peers who really struggled a lot more with the course. And there is one particular individual you speak about. I don't want to ask you to mention names or sort of the specificity of details, but just in broad terms, can you explain to the commissioners your first experience of the mental health struggles of others?
Sure. So this particular member I joined the Navy with went through, as I touched on, our initial Cerberus training, moved up to Penguin together, and were roommates at HMAS Penguin and progressed into our clearance diving course with. He at the time was the youngest of our course and quite, I guess, had limited life experience is a way I would put it, quite innocent and easily targetable for being, for being that way. He hadn't sort of, in saying that, I'd only joined at nineteen, but I had a bit more life experience than what, than what this particular person did. So he was easily targeted for being young, I guess, the sort of comment of, does your mum know you're here? Those sort of things were sort of off the cuff, aimed at him, but very challenging for someone in his position to deal with and to understand at that time.
And was he able to make it through the course?
No, he left. So the way that my course was structured, or our course was structured at the time, there was a Christmas leave period in between, so we went back to our families. And through that process, we had to hold a duty watch, so someone had to be available on base through those periods. He subsequently didn't turn up to those sort of obligations and was quite fearful to return and never returned.
Can I just stop you there? How did you know he was quite fearful to return?
Well, being his roommate and having spent that much time with him, we were very close, so we would talk about particularly that situation, I would talk to him on the phone because I was at home at the time on leave. So we discussed him not going and how he should then remedy that, which the simple answer is go back to work and front up to what are going to be the repercussions.
And you say in your statement, some sort of eighteen months after he went AWOL, he suicided?
That's correct.
What impact did that have on you?
Ultimately sadness. That is a life and a friend that didn't need to be lost for, due to the fear of coming back to an environment that should be supportive rather than fearful.
And obviously, he wasn't in service at the time. Do you know if the Navy was aware of his death?
The Navy was made aware of his death. I requested that I could attend his funeral in uniform at the time, which was the wish of his mother, that myself and my other course mates could be there at the funeral in uniform, and that was denied.
Who did you make that request of?
To my commanding officer.
Did you attend the funeral despite that refusal?
I did.
How old were you at the time?
I would have been twenty-one, I believe, twenty or twenty-one.
And we'll touch on this in a little bit more detail, sort of further on in your evidence, but one thing that jumps out from your statement is the kind of critical role you have in terms of helping the clearance diver community through their grief. You're a late liaison officer as part of funerals, and you have had sort of informal support networks. How did you come to assume that role?
I mean, through my own experiences, effectively. Having been through a number, lived through a number of suicides of my friend group, losing another friend in Afghanistan, having my own personal experiences in those places, I realised that I effectively needed some help. And if I did, then there was probably others out there that did too. So I guess I started the role as making observations of people that I worked with, my close friends, and then talking to them and asking them if they're okay, what's going on. Through, as that sort of grew and matured, people would start to seek me out because they knew that I was a safe place to, if it was vent or talk to me about their challenges, relationship, professional. And they knew that I was not going to then report that back through Defence.
And just coming back to you as a twenty-year-old, when you just lost your friend to suicide and Navy was aware, were you offered any mental health supports at that time?
No.
As part of your going through that training course, was sort of psychological assessment or psychological support an aspect of that initial training?
Definitely psychological assessment, very little psychological support. So there's, I guess, a number of gateways when joining this particular role, and I'm sure many others within Defence, that you must attend psych assessments and pass through them as a gateway to then, whether it's clearance diving course or an advanced clearance diving course, or many other roles.
And you've spoken about pre-resilience and resilience and sort of the, I guess, the physical aspect of that. What about as part of your training course, the psychological aspect of that, giving you the sort of the toolkit to be able to deal with the inherently dangerous and kinetic nature of the work you have to do?
As far as a formalised way of educating people or experiencing pre-silience and resilience, there is or was at the time, nothing, nothing to offer. It was inherent within the course that you would very much and very quickly learn to be resilient just due to the nature.
And do you have any insight as to whether or not that type of training exists now?
There has been some effort made through the High Performance Cell outside of Navy to introduce that, and there's been some success and some level of adoption, but not to the level that I believe is appropriate.
And what do you mean by that? What do you think is not there now that should be?
Support to these people that are going through these courses. It's not uncommon to have a near fatal event on a course. Within my course, we had one where a member succumbed to O2 toxicity and was near drowning. So that sort of event is fairly common within these courses. So to have, whether it's an embedded psychologist, which was mentioned earlier, or something of that sort of mechanism would be very beneficial to these people.
And in the aftermath of an incident like that, did you at the time, or do you know if now, there is any kind of critical incident, mental health support offered?
At the time, I received nothing of the sort. And I think, as far as I'm aware, that sort of mechanism is in place now. Whether it's used appropriately could be questionable.
Okay. Now, you completed the training course in about two thousand and six? And about three years later, in two thousand and nine, you were posted to Australian Clearance Diver Team Number One at HMAS Waterhen in Sydney? Now, during your time there, Paul DeGelder suffered traumatic injuries as a result of a shark attack. You say in your statement you weren't directly involved in the incident, but you were there in its aftermath? And I'm not going to ask you to speak to it, but it's plain from your statement that experience was very confronting.
Yeah, definitely. Having not been intimately involved in terms of by distance, so I remained at HMAS Waterhen at the time, there was a dive being conducted on the other side of the harbour, Garden Island. My level of involvement was I received the Zodiac on return from that particular event and dealt with, I guess, the aftermath of what was left over.
And what impact did that experience have on you?
So to this day, I have a significant fear of the water, which didn't bode well for me through the fifteen-odd years after that particular event, having or putting myself in a situation that every time I would get in the water was there was the thought that that may be my last time.
And I'm really struck by that, having heard your earlier evidence about how being in the water was such a passion for you from sort of quite a young age. What psychological support did you receive at that time?
With that event, I received no psychological support. For whatever reason, potentially due to me being separated from the for whatever reason, potentially due to me, uh, being separated from the, uh, uh, geographical position where it happened, um, so yeah, none.
Um, and I, I mean, we, we have, I mean, we might come to this in a bit more detail, but we have heard some evidence about the reluctance particularly of clearance divers to be full and frank about issues that are affecting them psychologically because of the fear of a mech downgrade, um, putting yourself back in the position, um, then in two thousand and nine, were those kind of fears operating on you?
For sure, um, that, that theme goes on, uh, almost from, I guess, my earliest, earliest memory of that theme of, uh, hiding or sort of covering up any injury, mental or physical, uh, was sort of moving up to HMS Penguin, so that sort of area of, it was made, um, well-known that if you missed a certain amount of time being days over this year-long course, it would, uh, likely result in you being either backclassed, removed from course, or transitioned outside of the Navy or into another, another role within the Navy.
A- and you said, you know, you, so as a result of that incident, you had that real fear of the water, and that was something really difficult to deal with, given the requirements of your next fifteen years of service, how did you manage that?
Um, I don't know, to be honest, um, you just, you just, you just get on with it, um. Alcohol was quite a big part in that, uh, dealing with that, however, um, yeah, you just get in and do the job.
Now, are you aware of the investigation that followed the incident involving Paul De Gelda?
Only from the peripheral.
Do you know of any recommendations that came out of that investigation?
No, I didn't have much, um, oversight of that, just, uh, likely due to my rank being quite junior at the time.
Okay, uh, now, um, the incident in Sydney wasn't your only exposure to trauma during the course of your service. In two thousand and twelve, you were deployed to Afghanistan, um, and you give evidence of a particularly traumatic incident that you were involved in during that time. Now again, I, I don't wanna ask you to speak about the detail of that incident, it is in your statement, um, but what was your experience of the psych support you received after an event of that type?
Look, to give, um, an honest answer, it was, um, simply, in my opinion, put in place to ensure that it appears that something's been done. Um, and I expand on that by saying that after this particular incident, um, being involved in an IED blast, uh, we remained in location for approximately two days. My, uh, memory on that, uh, specific event is a little bit off, so may have been one, may have been two days. Um, and then we were returned back to the, uh, main base within Afghanistan for, uh, psychological screening. So approximately forty-eight hours had passed since the event, um, with no psych support, um, being offered, uh, and then going back to do a screening, which was, uh, as I said, more of a tick-and-flick exercise than what I felt was, um, legitimate concern for my mental welfare.
Um, were you given any sort of information about the type of reactions you might have to an incident of that type and how you can deal with them and when you should look for further help?
Look, at the time, uh, the operational tempo didn't really a- allow for that. It was, uh, spend a day or so within, uh, that base, and then we returned back out to where FOB to continue, um, with, uh, mind-clearing operations.
A- and during that screening exercise, were you honest about your mental health?
No.
Why not?
Uh, because that was kind of my, using a sporting analogy, that was my grand final, that's what I'd trained to go and do, uh, and I knew that being honest would cut that short.
So it was the fear of cutting it short that led you to hold those things back?
Yeah, that's right, uh, I would, uh, quickly, um, be taken out of my team that I was operating with, uh, leaving them one man short, uh, leaving me, uh, sort of in limbo, potentially being returned to Australia. Uh, so affecting not only that deployment, that team, me as an individual, but then my career going forward, um, could have likely, very likely, and probably been stunted.
So you had sort of a sense of responsibility to your peers, but then also a concern for the impact on your own career?
For sure.
A- after that particularly traumatic IED incident, how much longer were you on deployment after that?
Um, approximately three months, um, so at that stage, uh, I was effectively blown up, uh, and that was the same time my son was born a few weeks later, so that's, that gives me that sort of, I guess, date to work with.
And he was your firstborn son?
He was, yes.
What was your experience of returning from Afghanistan?
Um, very much at the time, it was such, it was so common, there was rotations going every three to six months, um. I was separated from Navy, working with the Army, so once I came back, I sort of left the Army unit, moved back to a Navy unit, and kind of that period in my life was forgotten, not acknowledged, not, uh, used to benefit anyone.
So just to make sure I, I understand this properly, obviously, so, so my understanding, the effect of what you're saying is you're on deployment, not connected with your ordinary cohort of Navy clearance divers, you were, you were within other units, um, that were over there?
That's correct.
Um, and then you come back, um, you say in your statement, there was no real acknowledgement from the c- clearance diver community about what you had been doing or what you had experienced, can you speak to that for the commissioners?
Sure, so within, um, I guess my peer group, there was definite interest and, um, the opportunity for professional development that I'd, um, could offer to, to my peers, but, uh, looking more broadly up and out within the clearance diving community, the, um, skills and experiences that I was returning with, um, were not, in my opinion, put to the best, um, practical, uh, example, training people. I could have been helping training, uh, moving, but I was, I guess, put into a benign diving, um, situation.
Just focusing though on the service you'd given during that time of deployment, um, and sort of from what you've said, the obvious cost to you, um, emotionally and physically, was there any recognition from within Navy of that service?
No.
And what impact did that have on you?
Look, I, I don't, I don't do that job for glory or glamour or seek praise, um. So for me personally, I knew that I'd gone and done a, a job that was needed to do, if it wasn't me, it was gonna be someone else, so in terms of what effect it had on me, uh, very little, but also, like, I'm disappointed, people that put themselves in those positions, uh, should be, uh, at least acknowledged.
I think we heard evidence earlier this week, and no doubt I'll be corrected if I'm wrong about this, um, but that Navy's current motto is people first, do you know if I'm right or wrong about that?
Look, uh, that, that sounds really nice as a motto, but, uh, in my experience, it's far from the truth.
Yep, and what has your experience been of Navy and the way it supports its people? Not just as a capability, but as individuals?
The common, uh, way that I explain it and that many other people, um, within Defence, uh, I've had experience with all three services and all, all of the ranks, that, uh, you're simply a number and you will be replaced very quickly, um. Yeah, that's, that's the, the cut and the drive of it.
Now, I wanna come forward from two thousand and twelve to October of two thousand and twenty-one. You say in your statement that at that time, you were posted to what you describe as being your dream role as Officer in Charge of the Maritime EOD Capability. What does that role entail and why was it your dream role?
Look, from very early in my career, having the experience of Afghanistan and the, I guess, explosive ordnance disposal world, um, that was what, where my passion lied. Um, so to be the, the chief of that element and to run that element was something that I had, um, aspired to throughout my career, uh, and was lucky enough to reach, um. It led me to then, uh, lead a cohort of, uh, both senior sailors and junior sailors, um, a- approximately fifteen to twenty sailors.
And had you had sort of a command position like that before?
Um, not in that capacity, I had, um, been involved in leading a team, uh, for the, uh, withdrawal of Afghanistan, but that was my first, uh, official posting, uh, in a semi-command role.
A- and in terms of the sort of scope of that command role, and am I right to understand that you had a number of trainees sort of under your, under your direction?
That's right, so I had, in, I guess, to clarify, all fully qualified clearance divers, however, uh, significant on-the-job training was required, um, once they'd left, uh, their clearance diving training.
A- and in terms of it being your dream role, um, was having that ability to lead sort of a bun- a cohort, um, of clearance divers one of your aspirations?
Yeah, very much so, um, I place, uh, significant importance on leadership and how these, these members are led, um, particularly into these, uh, situations where, uh, are high-threat, quite kinetic, uh, within that EOD, um, environment.
Now, y- you say in your statement, the reality of that role led you to your lowest point.
Hmm.
Can you explain to commissioners why that was the case?
Yeah, um, it comes down to, I guess, the burden of leadership at the time. Um, I had had what I believe quite a, uh, successful, but busy and, um, turbulent career, uh, through with a number of highs and lows, um, the lows being the obvious, uh, uh, extreme situations that I was in, um, so then to be thrust into this position of leadership, which I definitely wanted and sought, um, I now recognise that I was gonna be the one, uh, asking these people to put themselves in the same position.
A- and you talk in your statement about how that role morally made you feel uncomfortable, um, and also in the face of clearance divers that were sort of willing and wanting to kind of take on the challenges of the role, can you explain that sort of moral conflict to commissioners?
Um, inherently, the people that are, uh, interested in a clearance diving role and that sort of employment are, um, sort of go-getters, they wanna get out and do the job, they, they seek those, uh, hard tasks and those extreme environments. Um, so to then lead them, uh, and ask them to, to do those things, uh, had some significant effect on me to the point that, that was, that was the time that I put my hand up and said, I need to get some help, um, and led to the, I guess, the end of my career.
A- and were you receiving any support at that time?
Uh, the only support that I was receiving was outside of Defence.
And why did you elect to go outside of Defence to receive that support?
Yeah, I made that, uh, as a very conscious decision, because, uh, as, uh, spoken about earlier, I did not want my mental health, uh, to, um, be, I guess, front of mind for, uh, me losing my career.
Now, um, y- y- you talk in your statement about, um, you know, getting to your lowest point, and, and I'm not gonna ask you to talk about that, but looking back now, what do you think were the factors that took you to that place?
Um, the obvious one being, uh, having hidden these, uh, psychological and moral injuries for a significant amount of time, we're talking, by the time I left, sort of fifteen, fifteen years, um, so to then, uh, find coping mechanisms through that time being, um, substances to, uh, deal with and take my mind off of, off of those significant, um, mental injuries, uh, yeah.
And how did you pull back from that point?
Look, I got to the point where I had to, I had to say something, um, I've, uh, I guess, the, uh, the option of suicide was there, um, and, and definitely a consideration, um, but I've got too much to live for and a family that I need to be here for, so that was, that was a mechanism to say, hey, like, enough's enough, I, whether it's a career that I'm gonna lose, it's better than everything else that I have the ability to lose.
A- and you say that, you know, once you had that realisation, you walked in to the medical unit at the dive school, and you spoke to your CO and your warrant officer, and you, you were frank with them about what was going on.
Yep.
What support did you receive when you reached out to Command?
Look, the support that they provided at the time was, was second to none, um, my CO and warrant officer at the time were amazing, um, and effectively from that, uh, that meeting, I'd, uh, earlier that morning, I'd seen a psych, um, at HMS Penguin, said, look, this is what's happening, uh, this is where I'm at. There was some level of concern, I was immediately medicated, and then, uh, went back and had that meeting with my CO and warrant officer. Uh, their response was, okay, well, what can we do, um, the initial, um, again, response was, well, you need to go home and, and take yourself out of this environment that's obviously causing this distress, um, my family was currently in Queensland, and I was posted to Sydney, and I was living on board HMS Penguin on a room, uh, on the base, so. The option for me to go home was to return to, uh, two-by-two room on board HMS Penguin and be, um, quite isolated there, uh, again, the state that I was in, I said, that's not good enough, I need to, I need to be with my family, uh, so that day, uh, I returned back to Brisbane, uh, and that was the last time I put the uniform on.
And did you ever think that you could stay in the Navy after disclosing your mental health issues?
Uh, at the time, I didn't expect so, no.
Looking back, um, thinking about your, how many years had you served at that stage?
Uh, eighteen and a half.
Um, looking back, uh, do you think that there ought to have been a role for you there?
Look, I definitely, um, had the ability to continue giving service, whether that was in the capacity that I was, um, doing when I left, uh, I don't know, um, but I continue to give service in a different role now, so I think there's definitely, there definitely was an option there somewhere.
Can you tell the commissioners about your experience of transition?
Yeah, transition was, uh, again, for me, I, my home unit was in Sydney, I was in Brisbane, so a lot of it was, I guess, lost in translation, simply due to geography. Um, so there was very little, um, communication, other than the standard medical appointments that I had to attend to, there was, uh, little follow-up, uh, and what was, was done, um, through my CO and warrant officer, who, at the time, I'd been removed from that unit, so technically, they weren't my CO and warrant officer anymore, however, they did the, I guess, what anyone would expect and still reached out to confirm and, and ensure my welfare was being looked after.
You spoke about the impact of you of, on, of a sort of really a lack of recognition of service after your deployment in Afghanistan. Um, that absence of reach-out at that time of transition or recognition of service, did you re- receive any recognition of service?
Um, y- yes, um, on my final day, I went back, uh, to get my, um, I guess, my marching orders, uh, for lack of a better word, um, and there was a ceremony conducted by my warrant officer and commanding officer, um, so I did get some, uh, level of recognition for my career.
And what impact did that recognition have on you?
Uh, look, again, it was a very emotional point in time for me, um, because it was kind of that, that final straw of, uh, you're no longer, uh, within this organisation, this community anymore.
Now, you say, um, that you're now the happiest you've ever been.
Hmm.
But i- i- it's clear from your statement that, um, it was a really hard journey to get to that point.
Hmm.
How have you done it?
Look, from leaving Defence, I, uh, prioritised me, um, I got a, a good medical and psychological team around me, um, and I effectively put in the work, um. That decision that day to put my hand up was, uh, a decision for me and my family, and I owed it to myself and to them to continue that work and, and treat those, those mental injuries and moral injuries that I was, um, dealing with.
You are still heavily involved in the clearance diver community?
Yeah, I have been, I guess, in the shadows of the Clearance Diving Trust for some time, um. I didn't formally, uh, want a role with them while I was serving. in the shadows of the Clearance Diving Trust for some time. Um I didn't formally uh want a role with them while I was serving because I was serving. Um it gave me um some arms-length protection uh that I could help people that were serving without uh following my obligations of reporting that um through chains of command or medical, medical chains for these people, so I gained trust through, uh through them being able to uh speak to me openly and honestly and know that that's not gonna go any further.
Yeah, now, uh I'm struck by that part of your statement, you, it's, it's evident that you speak to other clearance divers about their experiences of transition.
That's right.
Um, do you think your experiences of it are an isolated incident?
Uh definitely not. Um and I guess even closer to my home, my wife was serving, so she has a very similar experience um to me with being medically discharged. So that uh I guess points to that it's not just a clearance diving um related problem, but further out.
But it, it's a problem that extends more broadly within military, not just. Um o- on reflection, why do you think the period of transition for clearance divers, but also, as you said, based on your experience of, of your wife's transition, um so hard?
I'll speak particularly uh from a clearance diving lens, um I don't wanna, cause that's, that's my sound understanding. Um from, before you join, you have an opinion of what a clearance diver is. Um and through the process of train, joining, training, uh and employment, you uh tend to uh gain a mindset that you are of this, um this role becomes very much an identity for you. Um so for me to have that taken within effectively a day um was um quite shocking, uh that I, I didn't know who I was. Uh I look now and still question sometimes if, who am I? Cause I'm not that person anymore.
So that's something that's still, you're still grappling with?
Yeah, for sure, yeah. And I think, I think that'll be an ongoing thing.
Um and as you'll no doubt be aware, um I mean, this Royal Commission is looking to recommendations it can make um to better support members in all aspects of their military life, including transition. Do you have any sort of recommendations you would like the commissioners to consider to better support members through that part of their military journey?
Again, from a clearance diving lens, um there's, there's little educational information as to um how to expand your life, um have more involvement outside. It's, it's a job that you, you leave that job and you see the same people when in a social setting, uh in a family setting. I've, I've had many people um that lob on my doorstep and will stay for a week or a month or whatever, so you're so uh entwined within this community that that is, that's who you are at your core being, you become a, a clearance diver and a part of that community and group and social network and support network. So to then uh be taken out of that uh quite quickly is um been a key issue for me, so to answer the question directly for, as far as um recommendations, I guess, consider who these people are rather than just seeing them as the number that I, that I referred to earlier. Um consider where they're, where they've come from and, and how I guess patriotic, for lack of a better word, that they are, that they're gonna be taken from these, this role to then uh like I am now, I don't, I don't have a job, I don't have um that feeling of um serving and, and getting a job done.
So you'd want Navy to live up to the promise of that statement, people first?
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, it's, seems very simple to say, but apparently it's a lot harder to um execute.
Now, you spoke about this earlier, but as I understand it, y- you have lost a number of your friends in the clearance diver community to suicide?
Yeah, I've lost um four, four friends to suicide.
Uh and you've taken it upon yourself to support those clearance divers that you knew were struggling?
Yeah, um throughout, I guess, throughout my career, particularly after some of these more traumatic incidents, that's when I sort of gained an interest in mental health. Um and what was quite clear to me is the lack of support that defence was uh providing. Whilst there are a number of mechanisms um to uh or available to, to serving members, um they're kind of taken away and not, they're not actually accessible because people won't go there. Uh they won't go there due to the fear of um being medically drowned out, losing uh allowances that are attracted by certain positions that you would then be transitioned out of um if you were to then um have a mental health diagnosis.
And there's a real tension there, isn't there, in that, you know, there is, you know, the intrinsically dangerous and risky nature of your job, um that I would imagine, at least defence says, is why there needs to be that MEK one classification. Um but the alternative, that the fear of losing that classification and the impact on your career prevents people going forward with micro-traumas that might ultimately be able to be addressed. Just through the lens of clearance divers, are there practical ways you think that conflict could be addressed?
Look, I've tried to put those, what I think, and very much in my opinion, those practical um options into practice in terms of, I would meet with guys, a group of four, five, six, up to ten at times, guys that all had their own issues. Um and I won't explain or expand on uh any of the situations that they've been in because they will be identifiable and that's how I've gained the trust of those people is that I won't uh disclose who they are, the events that they've spoken to me about. Uh because that will allow them to, like I said, be identified and then potentially they go down the same route where I'm sitting now with uh having lost a career.
And do you feel that you are able to give the support, um you know, give the support that those who've gone through your own experiences need, given what you say is the real concern that if it becomes open, it'll impact their career?
Yes, um these young men for the, for this uh, for this situation, um have openly spoken about suicide attempts, attempts within defence establishments, uh planning non-suicidal self-harm. Um yeah, so I, just with them speaking to me and me letting them know that they are valued, they are, these, these problems are normal, um there is help. I will guide them outside of defence because that's what they want, they, they will not um go within and search within for these answers because they're scared of what is gonna happen. So I um make it my, my duty now to provide them with alternatives to keep them alive.
A- and you talk in your statement about a culture within Navy of putting its head in the sand around mental illness. What do you mean by that?
Look, I've raised it um on a number of occasions and to the highest levels of Navy. Um and qu- quite explicitly um through email about the behaviour that I've witnessed and that the, my own story and other people's stories. Um and the responses that I've had are shocking, for lack of a better word, I can't think of another word that's.
We might go, we might go, are you talking there about the email you sent um to the Office of the Chief of Navy in about July of twenty twenty-two? So, so where were you at? Had you discharged by that stage?
I believe, sorry, what was the date, January?
The fifth of July twenty twenty-two.
Still serving.
You're still serving. Uh operator, can you please display um tender bundle document number three, DEF dot one-two, ah, yes. This is the email you sent. Um can you e- explain to commissioners why you chose to write to the Chief of Navy and what you were hoping to achieve by this email?
Um at the time, I was uh preparing for my uh formal discharge, I was no longer in Sydney. Uh I was living in Brisbane with my family, um and uh displaced from the clearance diving community, so I, I felt that I wasn't in a position to provide the assistance to these people that I had in the past. Um so I sort of took it upon myself to um send that email with the intent of providing the details that had been made, I'd been made aware of and then hopefully getting some level of help um to this, what I consider an at-risk community.
A- and I might just ask if the operator could please expand the fourth and fifth paragraphs of that email, starting with, there are some pretty stark issues you raise in the email you sent. Um a- a- and you also talk about um your own experiences. Um wasn't it deliberate to be so explicit about, I guess, the crisis that you were seeing?
It had to be. Um it had to be honest and explicit with the hope being that it would shock, uh shock them into taking action.
Uh I, I might ask the operator if they could please turn to the next document in the tender bundle. Um it's document DEF dot one-two-three-eight dot triple zero one dot zero zero double six. Uh if you could just please expand the um passage, the first four paragraphs from the top email, no, the, the one at the top under the heading Ashley, thank you. So this is a response that you received at least immediately?
Yeah, um I think the response kind of speaks for itself.
What impact did that have on you?
Uh I was just blown away then by the complete lack of or le- level of importance that was placed on what I thought was something fairly significant and again, the catchphrase of people first, like that goes completely against, and it actually makes me angry.
I mean, the expression there in the email, so grateful for a day to get you the response that you deserve. Have you ever received that response?
No.
Uh do you consider it a response that just you deserve or do you think it's a response that the clearance diver community as a whole deserve?
Look, I wrote that on behalf of, of, again, what I said is an, an at-risk community. Um so like, I'm, I'm separated from that community now, so it, the response has to go to them.
Now, you also sent a copy of that email to the warrant officer for the Navy. Um did you receive a response?
I did. Um I happened to know at the time uh that particular warrant officer in the Navy quite well. Um so I received a phone call from that person. Um some weeks later, uh they had a period of leave due to their own um personal circumstances, so uh when they returned from uh that leave, uh I did receive a phone call. Um and that, that phone call, while productive and informing me that they had uh or were introducing some mechanisms to um protect people more broadly within the Navy, uh not just clearance diving specific, but uh Navy-wide. Um initiatives such as mental health leaders, um which I think is a very good initiative. Um I don't know how the execution is going, so I can't comment um any further on that.
Now, these emails you sent in July of twenty twenty-two, that, they weren't the end of your efforts to bring these issues to the attention of Navy?
No.
Uh after your discharge, you again wrote to Navy about your concerns regarding mental health amongst clearance divers. Operator, can you please display tender bundle document number six, it's DEF dot one-two-three-eight. Um can you tell me what prompted you to send this email?
Again, the, I guess, the lack of response that I'd received was, although shocking, not surprising. Um and I wasn't happy leaving, leaving the service, not thinking that I'd done everything that I can to, to keep these people safe and uh effectively alive.
A- and I'd ask if the operator could please expand the second to the fifth um paragraphs of that email. So you talk there about the farewell ceremony you experienced. Um but also your awareness immediately after that, that another member of your community was at risk. Um you also talk there about your efforts some months previously to raise these issues within the upper echelons of Navy. Um and your feelings of sort of the absence of a response that you receive. Um a- a- and I'm struck by your words, you say, well, now as a civilian, I, I have a lot more power. And correct me if I'm wrong about this, but the tenor of what you say there is, you can speak openly about your experiences.
Yeah, that's right, that's uh exactly the intent of that comment. Um my experience within Navy is that I got to the, the rank of chief petty officer, which is um relatively senior within the, the sailing um demographic. And yet I was still wasn't being listened to. Um so put a Mister in front of my name and I was hoping that people would start to listen, um unfortunately.
A- and you proffer in that email, um and I'm particularly looking at the sentence that starts, well, now as a civilian, y- you proffer some practical measures that might be taken to assist with the issue. You talk there specifically about mental health education. Wha- what prompted you to talk about that?
Look, there's, there's mental health uh education um provided by Navy and Defence uh currently. Again, it, it stinks of a tick-and-flick uh type exercise. When you say that it's an annual uh course that you have to do, uh myself and everyone that I know that's ever attempted or conducted that course is just a click-through it and get it done, cause it's an admin burden that is actually providing me with no education. Um my approach to this was, I have lived experience, uh not only my own lived experience, but uh quite a bit of experience with other people. Um I can, I can give, I can provide help, I can provide information, I can provide um assistance to these people and say that it's, it's okay to feel these things.
Yeah, a- and that observation you make both about tick-and-flicks a- and about what you can observe really resonates with some evidence we heard in the previous hearing block about um another cohort within defence who introduced um mental health first aid as sort of an informally compulsory program for its members. A- a- and the evidence that was given was the intent of that is you need to be able to equip your peers to see when something's going wrong, when someone doesn't want to reach out for help. Um do you consider a kind of mental health education programme like that might be something that's of assistance within the clearance diver cohort?
Definitely. Um I'll say that anything is better than what, what was provided to me at the time and what I believe is still going on. Um prioritising mental health, uh and prioritising your people is, is, is capability. Uh it's that simple. If, if these people can't perform these tasks that you're gonna ask them to do, then you don't have a capability. Um so it's quite cut and dry to me that if you want, if you want this ability to be able to do these roles, then you need the people to do it and at the moment we're losing those people very, very quickly through uh mental health um diagnosis and then potential discharges and suicide.
Uh that, that mention of capability um really resonates and I'm not sure if you've had an opportunity to read it with the Defence Strategic Review that was published in April of this year, or, albeit in the context of of this year, albeit in the context of personnel management. Um, that review said words to the effect that um it is recognised that people are Defence's most important capability. Those kind of measures that you're talking about here today, do you think they are the types of steps that Defence must implement to live up to the promise of recognising that its people are its most important capability?
That's the simplest, um, I guess, way forward that I can see. Um, these people, ships don't sail without people, uh, capability doesn't exist without people. Uh, and not only people, but people that are happy and willing and motivated to do their job. Um, they're willing to come to work, they're not trying to shy away from um fronting up to do things that are, in my, in my situation, I, I couldn't with uh with good integrity ask these people to go and do these things without them being fully aware of what that's going to mean for them in the future.
So would it be fair to say that in your view, Defence providing better supports to people around their mental health could in fact enhance its capability?
Yes, that's the simple answer. Uh, these people are going to be far more productive, capable, competent, um, and, and open to volunteer for these, these roles that, that they're not normal, they're gonna, bad things are gonna happen, it's, it's the nature of the beast, so.
Now, coming back to this email you sent on the first of November twenty twenty-two, did you receive a response?
I believe so. Um, from that particular person, yes, and um a couple of phone calls, um, with the uh message being that, believe it's a great idea, uh, we'll take it for action, uh, up higher, uh, and that was the last that I heard of it.
A- and do you have any optimism that the call to action in your email will be heeded by those within the Navy?
No. Um, it's one of those things that it's kind of the topic of the week or the topic of the day, uh, tomorrow there'll be another topic and that will be put through the shredder and forgotten about, is the experience that I've seen so far, and I don't expect uh to have a response.
A- and what impact does that have on you?
Personally, it disappoints me, uh, it makes me quite angry, uh, and it makes me scared for the people that are still there, that they're not, they're not going to be looked after, there's, I, I provided ideas, um, I said that I would volunteer and do it myself, I don't care, uh, I'm happy to make that, do that work, um, but it's been shown to me that the organisation isn't.
Thank you for your time with me, Mr Simmons. I, I don't have any further questions, Commissioners.
Thank you, Miss Longbottom. Commissioner Brown?
Um, thank you very much for your evidence today. I just want to go back and ask a few questions in relation to the young um clearance diver who ultimately took his life after going AWOL. Um, you said that he was kind of young and innocent and was a bit of a target almost. Um, was that the reason that he didn't, and I, I don't particularly want to go into great detail, but was that the reason why he wasn't able to meet his obligations over that Christmas period, or was there something else?
Uh, no, it was just him being, um, I guess careless and um just not turning up effectively.
Right, okay. Um, a- and, and during that time when there was, in your sense, he was being targeted, was there any supports available to him?
No. Um, the behaviour that uh went on uh within the DI school at the time uh was well-known throughout all ranks, um, so no.
And when you asked to attend his funeral in uniform and that was denied, um, but you went to the funeral anyway, I'm assuming you went not in uniform?
No, I went in uniform.
Was there any consequence as a result of that?
Uh, no, there wasn't, the uh, the Navy was unaware. I took leave that day and, and took it on my own back to, to be there for him.
Did anyone, a- any of your other colleagues do similar?
Yeah, one other.
You felt quite strongly at that time?
I did. Um, I think at least his mother deserved um some representation to be there, um, something that he felt so strongly and she felt so strongly about. I mean, if we talk about people first, then their families, they're, they're Australians, they, they deserve it as much as, as anyone else.
And his family had asked for you to, to be there in uniform?
She did, yep.
Okay. You talked about the, the training instructors and their approach to training, which was, and I think you used the words, we've always done it that way, uh, which I guess is, we've heard a lot about culture, and that's a pretty good description of what culture is, it's the way we do things around here. Um, i- in your view, is it um just that they didn't know any different? Or was there something else that prevented them from trying to do things differently?
Both. Um, there was very little education in terms of how to conduct yourself as an instructor at the time. Uh, there was often uh people that were quite junior, i.e. people that had graduated a course before me were now instructing me on my course. So there's no, I guess, uh consolidation training for them, they, they don't know where they're coming and going um at that point, let alone providing instruction.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm just wondering, again, and I asked this question of Mr Malley as well, but it just seems to strike me as so curious that, that after an extensive career serving in the Navy, that you're not offered the opportunity to do a different role. So why was that? Was it because of a diagnosis that you'd been given?
Yeah, so I was diagnosed with PTSD quite quickly, um, uh substance abuse, uh then further into depression. Um, so yeah, they sort of uh left me medically unfit to, to serve.
Right. There's no, no sense that you might be able to, in essence, recover to the extent where you could still be of use to the Navy?
Not at the time, no.
Is, is that your view? Do you think you could have served in a different role?
Look-
Given, given time, obviously, to, for treatment and, and recovery?
Yeah, and like, like I sort of spoke to earlier, like, I'm the happiest I've ever been now, um, I'm more than capable of providing service and I, I like to think that I still do in a very different or same capacity, but outside of the organisation. Um, so to answer directly, yeah, definitely.
It, it does seem to me that, you know, the, and again, th- this could be inaccurate, but it's the impression we get from hearing so many stories, is that it's a diagnosis given, and it's almost like that's the end point, there's kind of no perspective that perhaps there can be treatment and re- recovery and useful life beyond that.
Yeah, that definitely is my experience and uh my personal experience and what I've observed with a number of other people.
All right. Um, you said when you discharged, um, you prioritised you, uh, which is terrific, and you got a good medical and psych team. I'm just wondering if you could tell us what that looked like and what it took for you to be able to get that good team around you?
Actually, quite a bit of effort and not necessarily all on my behalf, I had quite a, a good um support network there, which allowed me to uh find these, these people. And I'll talk specifically about my psychologist being ex-serving, uh, so she has an amazing understanding of the things that I've been through, um, which makes my life a lot easier. Previously, I had uh reached out to services such as um Open Arms, um, and didn't receive the support that I needed just due to the lack of understanding.
So did, can I ask, did Defence or DVA play any role in assisting you to get that good team around you?
Nothing other than um the financial support that they, they now, uh, cover the costs of the psychological uh support.
But actually finding the, the treating practice?
Definitely not.
Okay, thank you. Um, and, and Miss Longbottom was asking you um a- about the tension between, I guess you, you, you're doing this intrinsically dangerous role, and there is a concern, obviously, if you're not a hundred percent well, um, that perhaps you shouldn't be doing that, which is what a mech downgrade would represent. But on the other hand, if you don't say you're not doing well, but you're still doing the role, I, I have to wonder which ones, you know, which one's worse, doing the role unwell or, or being actually able to put your hand up and get the support?
For sure. Um, and I completely agree with that, and I, I guess I'm a, a good case study for that, that I just didn't put my hand, maybe if I'd done it um at the time, then I could have got the help that I needed and still been serving and have a, have an amazing career. Um, but that was too much of a risk for me at the time, and my opinion and my attitude, which is a, a common, common one within the uh, the military as a whole, is that if you put your hand up, then to pack your bags, because you're going to be on the way out.
But wha- what's the way forward there, I don't know?
Sure.
Um, do you have any thoughts about that? I mean, it's inherently a difficult kind of challenge for individuals, for Defence, and I just-
It is, and I think, I think Defence needs to acknowledge that the education that's provided at the moment isn't, isn't appropriate for the people, and there's, there's what I believe is that loss in translation of, there will be some uh medical um side effects, for lack of a better word, that is going to affect your career, maybe for a period of time, or it might bring that to an end. So a very open conversation about what these diagnoses mean, is there going to be a, a recovery period and then can you go back to service? Or is that going to be the end of your career? And I understand that it's very case-by-case, so it does make it challenging, but that open dialogue just isn't there, uh, so there's that lack of understanding of, of the system as such.
Yeah, um, I, I, I think that's right, I mean, it, it is a case-by-case thing, but if there's an open dialogue that says this is the spectrum, it might dispel some misperceptions that perhaps exist.
Yeah, that's right, I agree.
Yeah. Um, I, just two, two last questions. One is, well, more, more a comment, I guess, you talked about the annual mandatory training, the tick and flick, that's pretty meaningless. I guess it just reinforces the difference between training and education. You can turn up, but you don't actually, you can get the, the tick, but you don't actually necessarily learn anything, you need something that's actually meaningful to, to learn.
That's right, and engaging to the uh, to the audience that you're trying to educate. Um, it doesn't matter who you are or where, where you're from, if, if someone sits you down and says you have to complete this um to deploy or to do, to continue just operating in your normal uh professional capacity, then they're not offering you much motivation to actually learn, you're just there clicking through it uh as quick as you can with generally an office full of um other people that are doing the same thing. So you share the answers, get through it as quick as you can and move on to the actual task at hand, because there is that operational burden of um, or operational tempo.
And can I ask, do you have a view whether that more meaningful education, who would be best to deliver that? Is it, you know, like, for example, is it important to have a lived experience peer? Or should you have a, a mental health professional? Or do you, a, a combination, do you have a view?
I think both. Um, I think the, I guess the gold-plated um suggestion would be someone there with the lived experience, uh, supported or supporting a mental health professional.
Um, and, and look, my last um thing is a comment rather than a question, you um ended your testimony today saying um how you felt about the lack of response, um disappointed, angry and scared. Um, I, I suspect, again, that may be a sentiment reflected and felt by many others um who've listened to your, your testimony today. Um, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Douglas.
Uh, thanks for your evidence. I, I just wanted to explore with you a little the role of the Navy Clearance Divers Trust in assisting you to do what you do now since you left Navy. Um, does it operate at all like an ex-service organisation?
Uh, no. Um, and I'll put a caveat on my answers to these, these questions, is I'm very new to that uh, that world, so um my opinion of my role is I sort of sit as a conduit between serving and the trust, current serving members in the trust. So I, I'm a friendly face and a, a common known face to uh approach if, if and when these people need help. So I don't think I can answer that question to the detail that you might want.
Let me ask, for example, does it have premises like a clubhouse where people can meet or anything like that?
No.
So it's essentially perhaps a lobbying body on behalf of clearance divers? Um, we had some evidence recently about the benefits of ex-unit organisations compared to larger bodies like the RSL. I- is there anything like an ex-service organisation for clearance divers?
Um, no, unlike you, I guess, suggested then, it's very much a um support network to be able to reach, be reached out to, um, rather than a, a physical location or something like that. I think the funding that's available at the moment probably isn't there to provide um anything like a physical location or, or that sort of um offer.
What's your view about um the possibility of members meeting, for example, in an RSL and keeping up contact that way?
Look, I think it's definitely a, a positive option, um, without putting any thought into it right now. I mean, that's the community that you potentially left or are still serving in, and um if you can uh form that supportive group, that people are willing to go in and feel open and um be able to communicate their problems or help others uh that are going through those problems, then uh definitely a, a way forward. My concern is that once you start to formalise those things, it very much feels like the back-at-work model again. Um, so there's, there's definitely a balance point there, and I'm not sure what it is right now, um, but there's, there's that concern that I have for that.
So I suppose I'm just imagining that it might be beneficial for people who've s- served in a fairly tight-knit cohort like that to maintain some contact at least for a while after they leave.
Definitely, I'm in the process at the moment of creating a, a contact list of serving and ex-serving clearance divers, so that we can um initiate those sorts of things, uh, as well as be able to track all these people that, once they leave, sort of become lost-
Yeah.
-um in their own lives and-
And as well as making the representations that the trust can make.
That's right.
Right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Simmons. Just a couple of points from me. Um, I just wanted to discuss family. You've mentioned in your statement the impact, obviously, that your service has had on you and, and your family and your wife being a former serving member. And then, without going into great detail, you went through the birth of a child and medical issues and, um, and your experience very clearly from your statement is that you got a pretty raw deal.
Yeah.
I just wonder, throughout all of that, your senior officers, those who were above you, what was their view? Was it, did they ever say to you, look, we'd like to help you, so not being able to come back for the birth and so on, um, or the support for your wife while she was going through issues? Was there any reaction or recognition from those above you that something could and should be done if people were really being put first?
There was, there was never even the inkling of the conversation. Um, particularly, uh, my son's birth um was challenging, not being there with my wife. Um, I was actually uh within a, a fob by myself, because my team had left uh for a patrol, so I was, uh, yeah, while there were still other people in the fob, but it wasn't my team, so there wasn't uh any support there. I'm fine with that. My uh bigger concern is my wife going in and having life-saving bowel cancer, uh, and then me leaving her for nine months, uh, as she's weird out of the hospital. Um, I sought support and uh requested uh to be held in Australia for a week while the uh ship at the time sailed to India. Uh, that was denied, and I was told that I need to go and get my own passport from Canberra, uh, sorry, uh visa from Canberra, because I was in Sydney. So the support was, not only was there no support offered, there was actually hurdles put in my way to um allow me to confirm that my family are good before I left for nine months.
Thank you. Um, one other issue, and I think we heard about this um a little bit earlier today from Mr Malley, but I just want to confirm from my own edification as well as the, the days watching, that it's a case, is it not, that um Navy clearance divers um deploy almost unilaterally to various units and join those units to act as, as, for what they do, um, which in some ways removes you from the protective group that you are a part of and who all know each other. Um, obviously, that would add to the stress, the fact that you're not part of that group, and while that group may be looked after in terms of psychological support or whatever as a group, you're not really part of that group, you're just there for- you're not really part of that group. You're just there for a period of time. You do what's required, and then you return to your group. Is that, have I got that right?
Yeah, you've spot on. And I guess for the three significant deployments that I have been on, two of them were Army, and I knew no one. The other one was Navy and on ship. So I knew the culture as such of Navy, but I didn't know the people that were on board.
And they didn't know you, obviously, when you came in?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Longbottom, any matters arising?
No, thank you, Commissioner Caldis. May Mr. Simmons be excused from his summons to appear?
Thank you. Mr. Simmons, we just want to thank you for your evidence, obviously, today. We want to thank you for your service. I want to thank you for your moral courage. Wish you every success. Your excuse from your summons to appear.
Thank you.
If there's no other matters, we'll adjourn for lunch.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you.
All rise. The Royal Commission into Defence and Veteran Suicide will adjourn till 1:45. The Royal Commission into Defence and Veteran Suicide is now resumed. Please be seated.
Ms. Longbottom?
Thank you, Commissioner Caldis. I call Jeremy Thomas.
Dear Jeremy Thomas, whereby almighty God, that the evidence you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Can you please state your full name?
Full name is Jeremy Graham Thomas.
And you are a veteran Navy Clearance Diver?
That is correct.
You have provided a statement to the Royal Commission dated 29 June 2023?
That's correct.
And I understand that you may have a correction you want to make to paragraph 88 of your statement?
So I have three corrections.
Three corrections? Let's step through them. What's the first one?
Paragraph 39.
Yes.
So where it has 30 seconds, that should be 60.
Okay, so that's in the penultimate line?
Last sentence, yes.
And the next correction, Mr. Thomas?
Our next correction or addition is 58.
Yes. Just wait to see if the operator can pull that paragraph up. And perhaps, operator, oh, thank you.
So 58, the invitation to present to Chief of Navy Senior Advisory Committee, that is dated 23rd of September 2010.
Okay, and that's the only addition you'd like to make to that paragraph?
Correct.
And then the next correction or addition?
Is 88. So 88, where it refers to death set, the technical term is A5800.
Certainly. So, Mr. Thomas, with those corrections and additions, is the statement otherwise true and correct to the best of your knowledge and belief?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Operator, can you please display the tender bundle? Commissioners, I tender the documents identified in the list in the manner in which they are described.
Thank you. They'll be accepted into evidence on that basis and allocated the next lot of numbers. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Caldis. Now, Mr. Thomas, you didn't start your career in the military in the Navy, did you?
No, I started initially in the Army under the previous Ready Reserve Scheme that ended in 1996.
And so what led to you wanting to join the Army Ready Reserve Scheme?
So I'm probably an accidental military person, is probably the best way I describe it. I was, I went to an all-boys boarding school on the Gold Coast, and the natural path would have been to follow a lot of that cohort and go to university, quite possibly in Brisbane or Queensland Uni. The Defence Force Recruiting Centre in Brisbane at the time, it is just, I happened to walk past it and happened to have stumbled in there and happened to have asked a few questions that presented an opportunity to take 12 months off university in order to train in an Army Ready Reserve Scheme and then provide part-time service thereafter.
And while the Army may have been your perhaps accidental entree into a career in the military, it appears, at least from your statement, that the Navy was a natural fit in the sense that you speak about your deep links to the ocean. Can you tell commissioners about that?
So I'm originally from Papua New Guinea, from a group of islands to the easternmost tip of Papua New Guinea called Milne Bay. We have deep cultural links. I have a deep affinity with the Pacific Ocean. And as an island boy, learning to spearfish, learning to fish, we spent a lot of time underwater.
And so, as you said, you joined the Ready Reserve Scheme, and then in 1996, you graduated from the School of Infantry and were posted to Brisbane. And it was around this time that you began considering becoming a clearance diver. How did you first learn about that as a possible profession within defence?
So I was fortunate enough to have a fantastic mentor within the School of Infantry, a gentleman by the name Sergeant Neary was in charge. And I had a conversation with him about pursuing a military career. And he asked some pointed questions about what my thoughts were. And I indicated that the ocean and diving were certain outlets that would present. And he directed me immediately to Navy and the Clearance Diving Branch.
And you say in your statement that sort of around this time or shortly afterwards, you began researching in depth and reaching out to former Clearance Divers. But you didn't immediately seek to make the jump across to the Navy. Why was that?
No, I physically wasn't ready for it. I was only 18 years old at the time. I understood after the research I'd done and the former Clearance Divers I'd spoken to, I needed to improve certain areas in terms of my cardiovascular fitness. There were certain times, run times, that I needed to achieve. And that was going to take time. And also to spend a bit more time in the water and improve my underwater skills in that respect.
So from, I take it from the answer you've just given, it was a deeply considered decision to take the step to seek to join the Navy Clearance Divers?
That's correct, yes.
And you ultimately formally transferred to the Navy in 1999, and eventually you commenced the basic Clearance Diver course. Now, am I right to understand that you're still in contact with a number of people with whom you went through that course? And in fact, one of those people is here supporting you today?
That's correct. So I, there is one other person from that course here today who is also originally from New Guinea. So there's a tight connection there. And besides that, the seven of us that passed are still very, very close.
So that's a bond that's lasted sort of 20-some years. Is that connection with your support person here today isolated in terms of the links you have with other members you went through the basic Clearance Diver course with?
No, so the, yeah, it is. The basic Clearance Diving Course is, I think we place a lot of emphasis on it. It is the first cadre of folks that you spend time with and you dream and you aspire and you work towards something. And then you achieve something within a very, within a certain space of time. And those links last a lifetime.
And you speak in your statement about sort of a recent reenlivening of your connection with other course members over a Facebook message group that was set up. Can you tell commissioners a bit more about that?
Yes. The Facebook message group was started by a former course mate of ours, who is currently is serving, and he is in the Army. And he started this Facebook message page at the start of this year. And after 20-something years, it just, it allowed us to connect and communicate and to retell stories and also to also explain some of the experiences.
Because I'm struck by your statement where you talk about, as part of that discussion, members opening up about their experiences during the course. But also, even given your positive characterisation just now, you also talk about that as being a horrific experience for you as well. Can you explain to commissioners what your experience was of that course, but also what's come out as part of that communication you've had with other peers more recently?
Yes. I think the establishment of that Facebook page has, some 20 years later, has allowed us to explore some of those experiences. And it turned out that a large, all of us were thinking the same thing in isolation. And to come to terms with some of the training techniques that were enforced at that point in time. And also to talk about some of the good, to take in and have a conversation about the good times as well as to reconcile those bad experiences.
And you have some, you went on to have some experience in the Navy in training other Clearance Divers?
Correct.
So with the benefit of that 20 years hindsight and that experience as someone who has trained other Clearance Divers, can you explain to commissioners your perspective on what things were done badly and why?
So initially, well firstly, the selection process was a fantastic course, and it was done, and it produced the result that it has desired to produce, in that a large number of us, upwards of the 90%, passed the course. Where the course differed from the selection test was that some of the training mechanisms or training processes put in place to correct certain behaviours were probably overused by certain instructors, not all. There is, I make reference to an activity that they use, which is called the run jump, which is essentially a physical activity circuit training with high intensity involved. And it is designed to take you to a certain level of fatigue. Now, the run jump, when employed in its purest sense and the ability to impart fatigue and improve fitness, when done correctly, was a fantastic tool in order to improve fitness. When, but in some of these isolated incidences, it was overused purely to, purely to break you down physically, when in fact, any physical activity should improve on the standard and the physical being that you're currently holding at that point in time. And we saw it clearly displayed on our course.
And was physical injury that either you suffered or those of your peers a feature of that course at that time?
Yeah, correct. So when the run jump was overused and you're taken to a level of fatigue, the first thing that goes is your technique and a whole bunch of, and you start employing some pretty poor posture and muscular issues in order to get through it, which reinforces some poor posture, poor technique, and is more damaging to the physical health of the person than actually improving it.
So you've spoken about this sort of longstanding bond you had with that cohort you went through. But, and this realisation that came just this year, that you all had the same feelings about that experience but hadn't shared them before that time. Do you have a view about why that is? If you were so close and you were all having this experience, why you didn't or didn't feel that you could share them with others?
I think part of the reason is, the minute we finished course, we were geographically isolated. Certain personnel got posted to Western Australia, others got posted to the Eastern, to Sydney, and some got posted to ships. So you're separated essentially, and then you're building bonds within your dive team or within the unit that you're serving within that point in time and trying to build those connections. And not able to fully decompress and to share together as a group.
And we've heard evidence today from Michael Maylie, and he's someone who's known to you?
Yes, he is.
How do you know Michael Maylie?
So I know Michael when he was posted to Commander of the MCD Group. And had dealt with Michael and socialised on many occasions.
And so when Mr. Maylie gave evidence earlier today, he spoke about the concepts of pre-resilience and resilience. Do you think the basic Clearance Diver course was something that assisted you to become resilient? Or was it something that had, and I'm focusing particularly on your mental resilience? Or was it something that had ultimately an adverse impact on you because of the nature of some of those punishments that were met out?
Yeah. So the nature of the punishments obviously had an adverse physical effect on the individual, certainly me. The mental resilience piece with regards to the selection process was excellent. And it made its desired outcome of passing a large number of those on my course. The only thing I probably will add to that is the pre-resilience that comes in before you even join the Navy. And I suspect my upbringing, be it in Port Moresby or in Papua New Guinea... Papua New Guinea and the familial situation provided a large part of the pre-resilience for joining the military in the first instance.
So it was innate within you?
Correct. It is innate within me and it was, and the CDAT provided the opportunity to display it.
And what was it about the selection course, you described it as being excellent in terms of that idea of pre-resilience and resilience with your mental health? What was it about that course that you think stood out and assisted you?
Yes, so that's, it's taken, it's a journey, it's taken me a journey to get to that point, to get to that realisation. And the test of the selection process and the selection course, and there's a number of tests, and one is obviously the number of people that will pass out of the Clearance Diver Course, but the actual test of that course is when one is faced with trauma or traumatic incidences. And it was only then, when I actually faced trauma, that crystallised for me the importance of that course. I could, previous to the traumatic incident, and there's been a number, but there's one in particular, I probably would not have been able to grasp or answer it in such a way, other than it wasn't until I faced trauma that I realised how important that course was.
And, and I mean, struck, I'm struck by the idea that the selection course is a relatively confined period of time where you are faced with that trauma and your response to that will inform whether or not you elect or you are selected to go on. Do you think there is a protective factor in having a course that tests your resilience in that way, but is in a confined period of time so that there isn't an ongoing impact of those traumas if you're not able to be resilient to them?
Yeah, I do think there is a protective factor. What I say about the selection course and was that it was, it had psychologists involved, it had specialists involved, it had SMEs involved, and it was a time where you were under constant surveillance for the whole duration of the course. I don't see the course as building resilience, I see it as uncovering it in a controlled setting.
Yeah, and in a supported way with those psychological supports around it.
Correct.
Now, I want to move forward to October 2000. At that time, you'd completed the Basic Clearance Diver Course and you were posted to Australian Clearance Diver Team One in Sydney. Less than 12 months later, September 11 happened. And you say in your statement that you see your career as mirroring the impact of September 11. And in particular, following that event, you're involved in a number of operations both in Australia and overseas. And I don't want to go into the specificity of those operations, but one aspect that you talk about in your statement is your work as part of the Border Protection effort. What impact did that experience have on you?
Yes, the Border Protection operation had a profound impact on me. It was in a time in 2001 and the world was obviously changing after September 11. One of the direct outcomes of that within the clearance diving team was to send personnel up to the Northern Australian border to police the Northern Australian border for illegal arrivals. The media around that whole particular experience and the use of defence personnel in protecting those borders and in my own personal experience, being used to board some rickety wooden boats was probably not what we were trying to do. I certainly wasn't trying to do that. It was more policing and constabulary work as opposed to the function of a clearance diving team in that respect.
And was it just that the nature of the work was outside what you had trained to do or did the nature of the work create a moral conflict for you?
Yeah, the nature of the work provided a moral conflict for me. And I go back to the training and the use of policing borders and policing and constabulary work and the use of ADF personnel, well, sorry, the use of a clearance diving element which I was a part of to provide added security for the ship's organic boarding team was probably a bit much. We probably didn't need as much steel in the glove, which is what we presented for, it was a pretty desperate human crisis.
And did that experience affect your mental health, either something that you were conscious of at the time or you have come to realise with retrospect?
So I was only 22 at that point in time when I was engaged in that particular experience. And like a lot of these things, it's been a journey to come to realise exactly what the involvement was and to reconcile what I did personally, what we did collectively. The moral compass issue and the question around some of the hysteria within the media at the time and the use of ADF in this particular type of capability, there was certainly conflict there with what I saw in the play out in the media and what I experienced on some of these sea, on some of these boats.
And just to tease that out a little bit more, am I right to understand that what you actually experienced was a far more human face to the issue than perhaps a kind of hysteria that was presented in the media?
That's correct.
Were you receiving any psychological support from the military at that time as you went through those experiences?
No.
Were there any screening processes?
No.
Now, you also had some overseas deployments, but in 2006, you were posted back to the Australian Clearance Diving Team One in Sydney.
Yes.
What was your role when you were posted back in 2006?
So in 2006, I was a leading seaman, clearance diver. I was working within my countermeasure element of the dive team. And my role essentially was to do some basic level supervisory work to monitor the maintenance of equipment and ensure that was at a serviceable level to deliver for exercises and operations as they arose.
And during your time there, you were supervising a diving exercise involving Paul De Gelda when he was attacked by a bull shark and he suffered horrific injuries. You were one of those individuals present who were able to save his life. How did you do that?
So I was the supervisor on that dive boat that morning. We had another supervisor that was on the wharf. Paul De Gelda was in the water. There was two other junior members of my team on the dive boat with me. When Paul De Gelda was attacked by the shark, the shark hit him from, hit his right leg and launched him out of the water. I wasn't looking in his direction at the point that the shark attacked. I heard a scream, which was quite benign, and my initial thought was he had had a cramp or something of that nature. When I saw Paul eventually come to the surface, I could see there was a struggle with the shark and what presented was a swath of red water which looked as if it enveloped the whole of Sydney Harbour and the clear sight of teeth grinding away at what is his hand and at that point, his right leg. I radioed the petty officer on the wharf that we had had a shark attack and then I closed Paul De Gelda in quick succession. We were about 20 metres away from Paul, in which case the shark then went off in a direction. I lost sight of his fin and Paul De Gelda then proceeded to swim to the dive boat. As he proceeded to swim, his right, and I remember this clearly, as in this particular incident, the loss of depth perception, the loss of time, but there's a clarity in the moment as far as what I was trying to focus on. I could see his right hand, he could not swim with his right hand, so then he moved to his left side and then he started back sculling towards us. When we got Paul to the starboard, to the right-hand side of the pontoon of the Zodiac, his body looked as if it was, it was cut in two. We could not quite see a connection between his hip and his legs. And I instructed the two other members to position themselves so that we get Paul De Gelda up as whole as we possibly could. I grabbed the top half of Paul De Gelda. Abel Seaman Dart grabbed his hips and Abel Seaman McLoughlin grabbed his legs and we all pulled him into the dive boat and onto the pontoon, onto the right pontoon at the same time. Once we got him onto the pontoon, he lost consciousness and what presented was a horrific injury that was a clean, as clean a bite to a leg as could have been presented at that point and his hand was held together by a bit of skin. I instructed Seaman McLoughlin to go to the medical box that we had positioned in the Zodiac. I then asked him to go through all equipment presented that we could use to stop what was a severe hemorrhage and also manage his shock. As items from the dive boat were getting pulled out of the water, sorry, getting pulled out of the safety box, I was instructing him to throw that into the water to get it out of the dive site and to clear the, at least clear the headspace to deal with what we got and any waste of time was, we just could not afford to waste time. As it turned out, we didn't have a tourniquet or something of that nature to be able to stop the bleeding and to deal with this severe hemorrhage. We then used jackets, we, three jackets, put that into his leg. The hole within his leg absorbed the three jackets and then we used a life jacket to create a splint. He was nice and stable on the pontoon. We then moved him to a stable position behind HMS Darwin, which was alongside at that point in time. And then we moved him to a more stable platform to continue the work.
And so that effort in using a makeshift tourniquet, as you say and as we've heard, was critical to saving his life. And you were obviously able to be very clear-headed in a moment of quite confronting trauma. Is that something that was innate in you, do you think, or was there an aspect of your training that helps you bring that clear-headedness to that event?
Yes, I think a bit of both. I think innate, but also aspects of the training, but then I refer to the selection. Now, the reality is, and I didn't quite understand the value of the selection up until that point in time. And the other piece to the diving activity in its purest sense, when you are underwater and you have someone connected to a life preserver that is providing you oxygen or providing you breathable gas and you have limited time in order to achieve the job and you have a visual indicator that you can monitor how much gas you have, the understanding of breath is absolutely critical. And to, and they're exercised individually. It wasn't formally trained, but also brought into that environment from different sporting backgrounds, whether it be running or other parts, on understanding breath and utilising breath in that particular instance. And that displayed on that morning.
And in the aftermath of that incident, there was an inquiry conducted by COMCARE. Were you interviewed as part of that inquiry?
I was interviewed in the IOI into Paul De Gelda, which offered up recommendations at the end of my particular interview.
And can you tell commissioners about that experience, about the recommendations that were offered up and the views you expressed to those in your command about those recommendations?
Yes, so the recommendation I put forward was the Clearance Diver Selection Test and the fact that it had validated in some way that morning. I also suggested the reinvigoration of an officer selection to ensure that officers get the same opportunity to experience what is a pretty valuable tool. I then also recommended a tourniquet as part of, as a critical part of the medical kit required in order to deal with the severe trauma that we faced.
And was there any discussion at the time of you canvassing those recommendations about whether or not a tourniquet should be introduced? In other words, was there any pushback at the time about that recommendation?
No, not that, not that I saw. And the reality is, when I gave that recommendation, some weeks later, I was assigned to mentoring task force to deploy to Afghanistan. So a lot of the pushback I missed.
And, and I mean, it's, we've heard today in very stark terms, the granular elements of what happened that day. Were they views that you were communicating to those in command at that time as part of the recommendation about a tourniquet?
Yeah, there's certainly views that I canvassed to command and to the, to my cohort within the enlisted ranks.
Now, is that the only time in your career that you've had to use a tourniquet to save someone's life?
No, so I used a tourniquet a couple of times in Afghanistan and one member of our team used it in a fatality where a member was killed in Afghanistan and his offside had lost a leg.
Now, and I think it might have been in that incident you've just mentioned, you were also injured and you were transported to a medical facility?
So I was involved in an ID strike in the vehicle that I was travelling in. After the ID strike, we were transported back to the main base in Orasgun and I was then transported to the medical field hospital where the corporal providing the initial medical assessment of me was Corporal Jackie De Gelda, support De Gelda's sister.
And what impact did that have on you?
It is emotional.
And I imagine for you both.
Yes.
In terms of those traumatic experiences you had in Afghanistan, were you seen by a psychologist after those incidents?
So immediately after the ID strike in the vehicle, I was seen by a psychologist.
And were you frank with a psychologist about your reaction to that incident?
No.
Why not?
But my overriding sense of, or feeling, was to get back to the EOD ID team that I was a member of and that was my main focus.
And what was your motivation to get back to your fellow soldiers?
Well firstly, the sense that I don't want to let them down and secondly, the other part to that and being in an ID strike. I'd seen injuries far more significant than the ones I had sustained. So to reconcile the two was difficult. And again, it's taken a journey to understand that particular experience, but my clear recollection was to always get back to the team.
So am I right to understand the answer you've just given is that you were sort of in a sense self-minimising your injuries because of what you had seen happen to others?
Correct.
And when you saw a psychologist after that incident, did they talk to you about the kinds of emotions you may experience in the aftermath and warning signs to look out for?
No.
And did you have any further follow-up psychological care?
No, the only other psychological psychologist that I saw was leaving Elmenhead or leaving theatre.
And so was that an RTAPS or a POPS?
Correct.
And during that screening? And, and during that, um, screening, as you were leaving theatre, and were you frank about your mental state?
Um, I, I don't really recall. It's quite vague to me, the conversation had at that point. It is, I'd been in Afghanistan for nine, I was eight going on to nine months.
And do you recall what your mental state was at that time?
Um, I was just exhausted.
And so you, you returned to Australia in 2010. What was that like for you?
It is, it is a bizarre experience because we, I flew into Sydney Airport, Sydney International Airport. I got off a plane in civilian attire and came through the gates, the same as someone coming in from Bali, slightly different experience. But it's hard to, it is quite surreal.
And did you come back from deployment with any of the people who you'd had that experience with, or were you entirely on your own?
No, it was, uh, it is just myself and the petty officer, just the both of us.
And, and was there any recognition of your service during that deployment, either by Navy or the units with whom you were deployed?
There, there wasn't, uh, there wasn't anything by Navy. There wasn't anything by the unit I was deployed with in terms of a hierarchy sense. But I do add that there are, uh, army friends, um, that, uh, I still connect with. So at the worker level, that, uh, I think it was all appreciated.
And so that's sort of at a, at a peer-to-peer level. And you might not know what the experience was for those you were deployed with. But, um, do you have any knowledge of whether or not their experience of coming back was different? Was there any recognition of their service as a unit?
Yeah, so it, 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 it was different and it is different, um, from travelling and, and deploying as a large formation. And the unit I deployed with in M R T F two were based up in Townsville. So they were able to have, um, uh, the ticker tape parade, so to speak. Not, but have that experience and that ceremony and that recognition. So it, which we, uh, were not afforded or, um, and, and, and our, our parent unit could not give either.
And what impact did that have on you?
Uh, it, it, you, you're fairly isolated because it's a unique set of experience within a clearance diving cohort that, uh, that, um, that hasn't experienced it. And, and so there's not a hell of a lot of folks that can empathise, um, with that experience at that point in time.
And, and, um, your evidence about this suddenly resonates with evidence we've heard earlier today. It seems as though the nature of the life of a Navy clearance diver is that when you deploy, you are most ordinarily within a unit that's not your own. Given that, how could, in your view, the Navy or the Army better support you as part of that reintegration process?
Yeah, I think, well, what would be good is, is to maybe get recognition from our senior officers. Or, or to have them educate themselves on what the clearance diver role in the first instance is probably a really good start. I think there's a lack of awareness, a lack of education within senior leadership in Navy. And therefore, there's not quite an understanding of how do we recognise these folks? Or what do we need to do in order to make sure that their experience that they've just come back from is captured and valued and appreciated?
Now, you, you say in your statement that your return in March of 2010 marked the beginning of the end of your naval career. Why was that?
So I returned to Australia in March of 2010. Paul De Gelder was attacked by a bull shark in Sydney Harbour in February of 2009. On the 12th of February of 2009, I was involved in a nursery patrol where there's an I D incident, which, uh, um, which severely injured a, uh, a young sapper, where, uh, part of his head was, uh, was, was, uh, copped the, the brunt of an I D that he was prosecuting with his mine lab. And I had returned, so almost 12 months to the, to the day that Paul De Gelder had been attacked. In March of 2010, I returned to the Navy, only to subsequently find that a tourniquet had not been implemented within our safety kit. And at that point, uh, what the Navy had lost with me was trust.
And what impact did that have on your mental health?
Uh, it was, it is quite, um, it, it is, I was just disappointed and I was angry. I was, I was angry that, um, that you got a, a group of people that had been exposed to, um, enormous amounts of trauma. And, and any lesson and learning that the organisation, um, should have taken was not taken. And in fact, I'll go one step further and, and, and I look at the individual and I do, and I refer to the lessons learned from clearance diver selection and, and, and how you get that person on the dive site. Paul De Gelder also presented a test to the organisation. And it presented a test to the organisation to respond. And the response after 12 months of being in Afghanistan was unacceptable to me. And it, uh, and, and the, and what played out was an irreconcilable difference and I had to leave.
And, um, are you, you familiar, you, you say there was a breakdown of trust between you as a member and Navy as an institution? One of the mottos we've heard Navy espouses this week is people first. How do you reconcile that motto with the experience you had on your return to Australia in March 2010?
Uh, it's not people first, in my experience.
And, and is that view premised on just that one experience? Or are there others that led you to hold that view and to your ultimate decision to leave?
There are many others.
Okay. Can we touch on, can you perhaps tell commissioners what were the most substantive of those other issues in your mind in terms of that sense of a breach of trust?
Yes, it's, and I go back to trust and, and I go back to expectations and, and, um, I go back to that dive team. So when I look at it, that performance was delivered by the bottom three, um, three ranks in the bottom, in the bottom part of the pyramid within, within the hierarchy, that is defence. The expectation from, from, uh, the Chief of Navy, from Paul De Gelder's parents, and from myself is that should a situation arise like that, we do the best we can with the resources we have to deliver the performance that we did eventually. And my expectation of the leadership was that, and is that, that they learned the lesson and they apply the same urgency, the same agility, um, that we had to as the bottom rung of this big pyramid and deliver that to us. And most importantly, deliver that to Paul's mum or insert any other mum that sits in that chair. And that's what I expected.
And do you know why the Navy didn't implement the recommendation for tourniquets in first aid kits?
I have ruminated over that question for the better part of 12 years. And any explanation that I can come up with does not satisfy me. And I have no idea and there is no reason that I can come up with that would, that would satisfy the not implementing that particular com care recommendation.
It, it was a simple fix.
It, it's a piece of string essentially.
Now, in 2011, you decided to self-refer to a private psychologist. What led you to that decision?
I, I, it is, I, I suppose it is to protect my own, um, my own identity, my own reputation as well. The psychologist I did, uh, did self-refer to did work in the Navy, um, at one point. I'd seen him previous. He had exes, uh, he, he was, uh, had the ex-military experience from Ireland.
So you, you, you've spoken there about a desire to protect. And I take it protect the privacy of obtaining treatment from a psychologist? Is that, is, am I right to understand that's what you mean by protect?
That's correct.
But obviously there was something that was motivating you to seek out that help, irrespective of your concerns about the risk about being open about it. What drove you to get psychological help at that time?
I, I, I knew I wasn't coping. I was, um, probably overusing alcohol as well. And, and that was bringing out a lot of, um, taking me to some dark places. And, uh, and, and there was a point where I needed to reach out and, and to sort help.
And, um, am I right to understand that, that first step of seeking help in 2011, ultimately led to a medical downgrade?
That's correct.
Can you explain to commissioners your journey from that first reaching out for help to that medical downgrade occurring?
Uh, yes, I was medically downgraded. I was, uh, uh, posted to the M C D group at that point in time. So I was, I wasn't working at a dive team, at an operational dive team. And one of the realities of seeking a medical downgrade or having a medical downgrade and moving from an operational dive team to the headquarter function, um, was a loss of pay as well. There's a lot of allowance wrapped up within the, uh, within your posting, within a clearance diving branch. And clearance diving attracts a lot of risk and danger pay.
And so do you, in your view, is that extra financial benefit, um, or in your own experience, is that a consideration in not coming forward with issues affecting your mental health?
Absolutely.
And in, in your view, um, um, and I've spoken about this earlier with, with some of your peers, there's an obvious tension between, um, the intrinsically dangerous nature of being a, uh, clearance diver, the, the mental resilience that requires. But also the risk factor then of individuals not coming forward with issues that are affecting their mental health, which may be eminently treatable and prevent those issues becoming chronic. Do you have a view about how that tension between having to have a highly, um, the necessity of, of having, um, the resilience to be able to do the work you do, but also the need to be able to treat issues when they arrive, when they rise can be reconciled?
Yes, uh, um, I'd answer it this way. The nature of the job and the positions that clearance divers will be, will be placed in will undoubtedly place their bodies under extreme, um, extreme pressure, but and, and exposure to trauma in the very first instance. I think there probably needs to be a reframing around trauma, um, and, and how we view it within that organisation. If we first accept that the job that they're going to do will place them in trauma. And, and, and then allow or build structures within the organisation to have those that have experienced trauma gainfully employed so that we learn from the trauma. If I look back at the trauma that I've been experienced, that I've been exposed to, I, I wouldn't take back any, uh, uh, any one of those, uh, bits of trauma. I volunteered to be there. And in fact, the Paul De Gelder incident is, is the, uh, the best that I could have been. Now, to not have been there would then suggest that I probably would not be suffering from, would not have experienced the trauma and suffer the post-traumatic stress disorder that came with that. But I wanted to be there. And the organisation placed me there and they did the right thing in selecting the right people. How we then reframe that conversation and then put in place structures to capture them and move them into some of these areas so that they can decompress and, um, maybe analyse and maybe reflect and self-examine what, what one has just gone through.
So, so I understand you to be saying, as an organisation, and as an organisation that has a governance system that is accountable for the mental health and wellbeing of its members, the Navy needs to do better in how it manages trauma?
Yes.
One of, um, Commissioner Brown raised a question with a witness earlier with Mr Simmons about whether or not there is a greater risk in clearance divers working unwell because they are afraid to come forward or, um, having a mech system that at least on its face purports to ensure that individuals are mentally resilient at the time they deploy. Do you have a view about that?
Not, not particularly, other than to say that the, the, your first part of the question is presenting greater risk. I certainly agree with that premise that, um, pushing through some of the mental health and masking some of the mental health issues, and, and, and being in charge of positions and responsibilities, supervisory responsibilities and is potentially, is incredibly risky individually and to the people that you're looking after or have to provide, um, a safe dive site for.
Now, it was while you were in the process of discharging that you were diagnosed with chronic PTSD. You say in your statement that you were happy that you had that diagnosis. Why happy?
Um, it, 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 it put a label on some of the behaviours that I was, that was playing out. So it is, I, I was happy to finally get a name to it and, and try and deal and with, um, uh, with having PTSD and so forth. So that, that is a relief.
So it enabled you to name what you were confronting and take steps to address it?
Yes.
Now, you were discharged from the Navy in 2015. But from 2016 until just recently, you heard, you held a contractor role as safety officer to Navy within what's called surface force?
That's correct.
Can you explain to the commissioners what that role involves?
Uh, yeah, so I, I, um, essentially provided the work, health and safety oversight for, um, a lot of the activities that were taking place within the particular division that I was working, uh, within.
And as part of that role, did you have any engagement with Navy clearance divers?
Uh, yeah, I did. And I had, uh, particular engagement with the diving community, um, in the first instance. So the, the, so there's two types of divers in the Navy. There are ships divers, uh, and then there are your full-time clearance divers. The division I was working in, um, uh, held the policy around the ships diving use and capability, which then, um, got me close into contact with the clearance diving community.
Uh, now, what was the experience like having clearance, having connection with the clearance diving community, albeit as part of your role as a safety officer within Navy?
There was tension there, there was tension there. And, and the tension arose from, I was providing a, a degree of safety oversight on a ship's diving capability. And engaging the clearance diving, uh, headquarter function. Who provided the, 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 uh, the technical control on, on some of the documents and some of the procedures that we were employing. And, and the tension arose from some of the inconsistencies that I could see, uh, within the policy landscape for ships diving and what the clearance diving group were, um, uh, were implementing.
And what was, you don't have to go into the specifics, but in broad terms, what was the nature of those inconsistencies insofar as they concerned safety issues affecting clearance divers?
Yeah, so the, the first dive course that every diver in the, uh, in, in the Navy receives is your ship's diving course and that is inclusive of clearance divers. Ship's diving course is, um, is, is captured within an Australian standard. And there is a defence higher risk standard that prescribes exactly what, uh, what a, a and there is a defence higher risk standard that prescribes exactly what, uh, what, uh, needs to happen in order to qualify as a, as a ship's diver. So a clearance diver has to, uh, when he does his ship's diver course, has to meet those same targets or they have to meet the, what is prescribed in the, in the defence higher risk diving standard. Um, so there's synergies in that respect. What affected ship's diving certainly affected clearance diving because it's the first course. Um, the inconsistencies arose around, uh, diving time, dive times that needed to, needed to be achieved within a, within a ship's diving course of three weeks. Um, as well as a physical standard that was well prescribed, that a ship's diver needed to be tested to before starting course.
A- and so, and again, I won't press you for specifics, but am I right to understand that there was a shortfall between what the standards prescribed and what the testing or basic course involved?
That's correct.
Um, did you raise those issues within Navy?
I certainly did.
And, um, in what ways did you seek to raise those as issues of concern?
Well, Surface Force conducted a number of investigations into some of those inconsistencies. Um, uh, and they were raised within the, um, within the safety, uh, working groups, um, uh, held within Surface Force. Uh, and there was certainly engagement with the MCD groupers or dive site specifically concerning, um, concerning some of those issues.
And in your view, were those concerns heard and acted upon?
Uh, no, I think they're still open and live.
A- and what effect did that have on you or what effect does that have on you?
Well, as, as a, um, as a clearance diver, as someone that is managed and supervised on dive sites, um, the immediate effect, effect is, is anxiety. Anxiety and I, and, and, uh, because I know what those supervisors would be feeling. Um, and I also know the outcome of getting it wrong. So, um, and, uh, and, and the ultimate aim is to not put, um, another mother in, in the chair. If we, we can prevent that, then that's, that's what we need to do.
So in terms of that anxiety, do I take it, you can see the problem and the risk, and you can see the solution, but you're powerful, you're powerless to ensure the solution is put in place to address that risk?
That's correct.
Um, I, I just want to shift topics slightly and, but keeping on, um, the theme of supervision, um, but particularly supervision of trainees and trainee Navy clearance divers. I- is that something that you have had any involvement in during your time in the Navy?
Uh, so I've supervised, um, elements within a dive, within a diving team to the level of my qualification, which limits depth in certain bits of equipment, um, that I can supervise on. I have not been posted to a dive school in formal instructional positions.
If, um, you have though been through the experience of going through a, um, basic clearance diver course. Um, and I just want to focus particularly on the idea of mental health supports going through a course like that. It's one aspect of it is, uh, having the supports in place for the, the cohort that are trainees. The other is having the supports in place for those in supervising was, in, in a supervising role who have them under their command. With your workplace health and safety hat on, h- how important do you think it is to have those mental health supports in place? Not just for the trainees, but also for those who have them under their control?
I, I'd say it's just as important, if not more.
A- and can you explain to the commissioners why you hold that view?
Uh, because the, the, the dive site and, and, and the supervisor um, is responsible for the lives of everyone on that dive site. Now, he doesn't control the, uh, he, he doesn't control the person that comes through D F R and then ends up on a Warford Penguin. There's anecdotal evidences, there, 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 there's evidence that people have, uh, presented at a Warford Penguin without not being able to know how to swim. Now, the supervisor's job isn't to teach that person to swim, nor is the dive school a swim school. Uh, so the, the added pressure on putting a person who isn't competent in swimming in the water to dive down to a certain depth, to, to achieve a certain effect is incredibly stressful, um, and would be incredibly stressful on that individual.
Now, in June of two thousand and twenty-two, you were prompted to write to the Office of the Chief of Navy. I might just ask the operator if they could display tender bundle document number thirteen. Uh, it's D E F dot one two four O dot triple zero one dot zero zero five one. While that's coming up, can I ask you to explain to the commissioners what prompted you to write an email to the Chief of Navy at this time?
Uh, yes, so the Royal Australian Navy implemented a new, uh, fitness, um, physical fitness test. Uh, that physical fitness test removed a number of previous, um, physical requirements and then instituted, um, uh, a minute plank, I think it was, uh, for, for, as, as the standard for the rest of the Navy. I was working in an office surrounded by uniform members that, um, uh, that found it quite disturbing, this new physical standard that was being implemented. And, uh, um, and that those conversations and my experience, um, and particularly with the diving piece prompted me to respond to, um, to the, the, the signal that implemented or heralded the change to the fitness test.
And what was it about those changes that were disturbing from your perspective and based on your discussions with others to them?
Um, so, uh, e- e- essentially, it, it, it seemed to, to lower the standard. Um, uh, not only did it lower the standard, it implemented, um, um, this minute plank. And when you look at a sailor on a ship, um, and as the saying goes, everyone's a firefighter. Um, and I had it on very good advice from folks that, um, what they were testing was not going to keep members safe in the event of a fire or flood or like circumstance on a ship. And certainly, um, not a test for a clearance diving, uh, person.
A- and so does a con- a concern of the type you've just articulated link back to the idea you spoke about moments earlier of the anxiety for a supervisor, having someone having to dive to a particular level, but knowing, um, or having a reasonable apprehension that they don't have the basic competency to do so?
Correct.
Now, I might just ask the, um, operator to please expand the first two paragraphs. I- i- in sending this email, was that within the scope of your then responsibility of your office? Or is this something that you took your own initiative to do it?
Uh, so this is something I took my own initiative and this is probably taken from the perspective of a concerned veteran.
And you there talk about, um, um, your concerns, um, the disconnect between the fitness test, I understand you to be saying there, and tell me if I'm wrong about that, and, and various recognised standards that it should meet?
Correct.
Um, and you talk there about, uh, the practicalities of implementing this revised fitness test within the Navy clearance diver capability. Can you explain to the commissioners what you mean in that second paragraph?
Uh, yes, so the, the only physical standard that the clearance diver has to meet prior to being, prior to starting course is the Royal Australian Navy P F T. Um, now, the disconnect comes from implementing a standard that is, uh, inconsistent with what best practice suggests we should be testing to.
A- and in the second sentence, you make specific mention of the capability because it's a capability that's been actively engaged with the scientific community for well over twenty years. What's the point you're making there?
Uh, the, the point I make there is, is that, um, that the scientific community has been testing clearance divers. Um, and I was personally involved in tests going back to the year two thousand. Um, there's been exhaustive studies, uh, and, and scientific research published in, um, in scientific journals no less that have analysed the clearance diving trade, that have, uh, a- and, and the physical requirements around doing that job. Um, and so it's not, it is, it's not new, it is, it is out, it is, um, there, there's enough information.
A- and is it fair to understand what you've just said and what's said in that email to mean that that scientific engagement over twenty years warrants the higher level of fitness standard than the change provided for?
Correct.
I- in the next sentence, you talk about the capability being one identified within the Work Health and Safety Act and subsequent regulations. What's the point you're trying to make there?
Um, so the point I make there is that, um, uh, that, that there is a, a legal requirement no less and it to, to provide a certain, to provide a safe workplace. And, and military diving is, 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 uh, is captured within the Work Health and Safety Regulation two thousand and eleven. So, um, no less is there a scientific evidence to suggest that what, what has been presented is inconsistent. Um, what is legally being presented and then referred to in the Australian standard is, is not consistent either.
So this is a governance issue from Navy, for Navy in view of its, um, at least in your view, workplace health and safety obligations to provide a safe working environment for its members?
That's correct.
Now, um, I might just ask if the operator could please, um, turn to tender bundle document number fourteen. A bit over a week later, you received a response from a member of the staff of the Chief of Navy. Uh, and I might ask the operator to please expand as much as is possible the, um, three paragraphs of that response. Um, can you explain to commissioners what you took that response to be saying and what response you had to it?
Um, I wasn't surprised with the response. Um, and, and the response in the first instance doesn't answer some of the pointed questions I've raised in the initial email. Um, uh, it, it, yeah, it is, uh, it is disappointing.
Now, I don't have the expertise that you do in terms of diving safety, um, and workplace health and safety obligations. Um, I, I have to say that first paragraph is, it's opaque as to precisely what is being, being said there. Can you translate that for us?
Yes, I, it, it's, um, i- in a way, it, it, I mean, the first sentence is brushes off the initial concern. Um, it, it, it minimises, minimises it, it's, uh, a- and again, I'm not surprised.
And, um, you say you're not surprised. Uh, did that response affect you?
Um, yeah, it did, it, it, it is upsetting. I did socialise, uh, or distribute this particular response to the, uh, my immediate work colleagues and, uh, those members that are on, uh, uh, still in uniform um, of various categories, boseons, mates and engineers. And, um, I weren't surprised either.
Wh- why did you choose to socialise that response with some of your colleagues and peers?
Because it is, it is the initial conversation on the floor about the implementation of this new fitness test that, um, that triggered a response from me. Um, a- and, and, and I did it as a civilian, um, uh, with the support of the uniform members, uh, wanting, uh, wanting to see, uh, question firstly, uh, what is being implemented and also wanting to see what the response would be.
What's the significance of you doing it as a civilian, um, to support your members in service?
Well, I was, I was hoping the response would be different, um, as, as opposed to a member in service. Um, and when I look at the response, it's probably consistent regardless of whether I was in uniform or not.
Why did you ho- hope your then role as a civilian would lead to a different response?
Well, I was hoping that'd take a bit more time, uh, uh, and, uh, to digest the email than to deliver and then to produce a response. Um, and I was hoping the civilian and safety, uh, role would, um, elicit a, a bit more detail. Um, but the, um, the, the response, the evasiveness, the opaqueness, um, it, it's, it's, um, it's, it's what they would have given to someone in uniform, I would have thought as well, so. I'm not surprised.
Now, um, in your statement, you make some reflections commencing at paragraph four on your time as a clearance diver. Um, and in particular, you outline that you've been raising concerns with Navy about the safety of clearance divers since at least two thousand and nine. Um, do you see a link between those safety concerns you've identified and either your, your own experience or your observation of others' experience of mental health concerns?
Yeah, I have seen a link, uh, personally and also through, um, through the community.
And, um, if you're comfortable, could you speak to commissioners about your own experiences of that link between your mental health and the safety concerns you've identified?
Um, so I go back to, uh, and again, the, the Paul De Gelder in, in my career and, and, um, uh, it, it served as certainly served as an inflection point as to where I, uh, where I go and, and it was the highlight of my career, uh, no doubt about that. Um, so what should have been the highlight of my career and the test of an organisation to respond, if it had responded in kind as we expect, um, then I'd still be in uniform. The mental deterioration of seeing, uh, no tangible improvement to the medical kits and medical training, uh, noting what I just experienced and been through, um, was, uh, was very difficult for me. Because it's not something I would want anyone else to go through or have to fashion a tourniquet. And the reality is if that bit of greasy line is there, the outcome is quite possibly different. Um, and that's something that no supervisor, uh, should have to go through. Uh, and, and, and to cut the thinking time down and to go to something to, to use immediately. Um, a- and, and what was even more, um, and if, if you like, I, I, this, this is one of the, um, important points of the Paul De Gelder experience was meeting his mum. And I saw her, she had travelled from Canberra. We were in the waiting room in ICU. We did not know at that point where Paul was going to survive. And I was there with two other members of that dive boat. We were in civilian attire and she walked in with her family. Um, I didn't know them, they didn't know me. But they were obviously Paul De Gelder's, uh, parents and siblings. And the, uh, first thing, uh, we locked eyes. Um, and she asked, who's responsible? Uh, tell me everything. Um, and I explained the story to her, uh, and, and so what's often lost in a lot of our safety working groups, what's lost in the conversation is the key stakeholder in all of this is actually the parent, the siblings, the family and the wider community. Um, and the way Navy, uh, how they responded to the tourniquet and the recommendations, um, uh, I, I, was unacceptable to me. And I don't think a chief of Navy would want to be in that position to a mother knowing what's happened previously and could possibly rectify it from not happening or.
Would you characterise that missing tourniquet as symbolising a sense of broken trust between you and the Navy?
It certainly is, um, again, it is, it, it, uh, it is a test of the organisation. Um, and some part- Um, in some parts it, some parts, some parts of the organisation passed. The Navy of 1999 built that performance, the Navy of 2009 failed the test.
Now, um, as you know, this Royal Commission is looking to identify ways in which it can better support members of the armed forces, um, and to support their mental health and wellbeing. Based on your own experiences, are there any particular recommendations you would like commissioners to take away and, and to consider?
Yes, if I follow the, the trajectory of my lived experience from the point at the time in which I, I, um, I walked into a Defence Force recruiting centre, uh, in my instance Brisbane, and I chose to follow the path of a clearance diver. One of the things that did work in that system in terms of getting the right people, identifying the right people was they had a chief clearance diver fly out to the Defence Force Recruitment Centre and clearance divers were recruited by clearance divers. And a lot of the myth, a lot of the, um, surrounding that particular category, was articulated to possible, uh, uh, clearance divers. And so I was better informed, better informed and I could get feedback on exactly what I needed to do to improve and what areas would probably assist me, um, should I pass. So the recruitment, um, or having a uniformed person there, I think that's incredibly valuable. A valuable thing to happen, um, as far as making sure that the young folks that, that, that do enlist are informed. I gave a human performance workshop with, um, uh, with a wing commander from the Air Force at the dive school. And, um, after that, in 2018, after that, uh, high performance workshop when we spoke about the Paul De Gelder case study, I had students that were starting course that told me that that is the first time anyone had told them about what clearance divers did. And they had been in the Navy over 12 months. It's too late to get the, uh, to get that, um, piece of information when they're about to walk off the wharf and dive in the water. Bit too late for that. The other recommendation I'd go around is, um, I, I would, and I touched on it previously about reframing our conversation around trauma and how the organisation, uh, can build in structures to capture the traumatic experience. The test of a clearance diver and the test of the ADF or any ADF person and the real test is actually to go to war. We cannot avoid trauma. It is very much a part of the experience of every, uh, soldier, sailor, airmen. So to know that trauma is the experience, then the structures that, because if you don't want that trauma, then we don't go to war. But then to, to then capture that within the organisation and then to learn the lessons. In the clearance diver context, um, we used to have a reserve dive team. Reserve dive teams were removed, um, uh, 2018 or thereabouts. Now, the reserve dive team provided an outlet and an organisation for a lot of this corporate knowledge that left the organisation to then go back to their home ports, um, and then to stay connected with the organisation. But what it also allowed was for the organisation to retain that knowledge. That played out in quite clearly. And the best example of it playing out and the organisation using it and optimising that, uh, that situation was the Brisbane floods in, um, 2011 or thereabouts. The reserve dive team based at Belimba with equipment pre-positioned with ex-clearance divers within Brisbane that could, that were forward deployed, that could assist dive teams very quickly. That doesn't exist. So there, there's, there's, um, and, and then I go back to the, the, the physical, um, the, the scientific evidence around, um, what this occupation puts individuals in, um, has been studied. It is known. To not use it is to disregard the science. Uh, it is there. And in fact, it was implemented in the early, in, in, um, 2016. The scientific test for a clearance diver was removed in 2018. Uh, because the, uh, the, the, uh, the Navy didn't agree with what the, with the test.
Thank you, Mr Thomas, for your time with my questions. Commissioners, I have no further questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Brown?
Um, thank you, Mr Thomas, very much for your time today. Um, can I just go back to ask you about when you, you were talking about the run jump during your training?
Yes.
Um, and you said, I think, that they used it to break you down physically?
Yes.
I just, I'm just wondering what you meant by that. I, I under, I understand what you said about the fatigue and the, the posture and the, uh, but why would they want to break you down physically?
It, it was, um, often used as a punishment. And, and, and that is the mechanism they use, which was, which was the run jump.
Okay. And, and do you think that, that training method, that punishment was part of why people, some people fail?
Look, the, I, I speak of the, of, I can only speak of the CDAT era. And, and the figures show that with the CDAT in place, regardless of the run jumps, they were still achieving upwards of 90% pass rates. My issue with the run jumps is using that as a punishment. But also the, the, the course is there to teach and to educate.
Can I also ask, you said, you talked about the time when you were doing the, essentially the kind of border protection, um, role. And, um, you indicated to Miss Longbottom that there was no screening during that time. Was it because it wasn't considered to be a deployment?
Um, it is classed as Operation Relics. I don't know when it received that classification as Operation Relics, I don't recall.
All right. So you're not sure why there was no screening?
No.
And there was no periodic screening at that point?
No.
Oh, okay. And when, when the Navy clearance divers were deployed, um, overseas to Afghanistan, Iraq, et cetera, um, and you, and you, you talked about how you went as single, you know, individuals with other units. Was there any history prior to those deployments of Navy clearance divers being used in that way? I'm just wanting to understand, was there a previous way of doing it or it wasn't done previously or?
Uh, so there's only been four times in the Royal Australian Navy history that clearance divers are formed as a body and deployed to a conflict zone. And that is Clearance Diving Team Three in Vietnam. Clearance Diving Team Three was then raised in the eighties to, uh, to help deliver and build the counter-terrorism capability within defence. Clearance Diving Team Three was raised for Gulf War, uh, One. And Clearance Diving Team Three was raised for Gulf War Two. The other body that wasn't Clearance Diving Team Three, uh, that was used was InterFET in Timor, where Clearance Diving Team Four was used in operations in Timor. They're the only times in our history that a formed body of clearance divers under a command of, uh, with, with the, uh, uh, headquarter, uh, function as well as a body of clearance divers.
So, so why was, why was it different in those occasions as opposed to how you were utilised, which was as, as a single Navy clearance diver posted with another unit?
Um, I, I, I don't know. Um, I, I can't answer that question. Um, I just don't know.
Um, I just want to ask also about the tourniquet, um, issue. You said it's a piece of string essentially. And I'm taking it that you kind of meant that literally?
Uh, it, it is, um, and it, it's, uh, I'd suggest it probably wouldn't need any great engineering rigour to, behind it in order to accept it into service in Navy.
So it's, it's not really an issue of the advanced technology required?
No, it's not an issue of advanced technology, it's not an issue of the training imposed as well of training, how to use it.
It's not an issue of the cost?
Uh, it wouldn't be an issue of cost, I don't think.
So is there any comprehensible reason from your perspective why it wouldn't have been accepted?
Uh, no, nothing that would satisfy me at this point. It's, it, um, I get angry today still.
And can I ask, when you, when you spoke about receiving your diagnosis of PTSD and that was almost a relief because it helped you to, I guess, in a sense, understand and explain what you were experiencing? Did you have any education or awareness prior to that time around PTSD? What to look for?
Uh, no, no.
It's not something that despite having been on deployments, that was part of your, any training or awareness that you were given?
Um, no, it's not that I recall.
No. Um, and again, I'm, I'm sorry to just go to the, the small points, but, um, it, it just, um, my eyebrows raised when you talked about being a dive instructor, uh, or sorry, a supervisor and having someone who came with, who wasn't able to swim very well.
Uh, it, it's, it's, um, it astounds me still to hear that. There, there is no conceivable explanation as to why you would recruit someone off the street for a diving role that can't swim.
I have to say, I, I can only agree with you. And just in relation to the physical fitness test and the lowering of the standard from your perception, was there, is there any international comparison that we could look at?
Uh, yes, our peer nations have a fitness standard. The implementation of the, the, uh, minute plank, um, is used in the US military and the US Navy. And the Navy time, I think of one minute, the US do three. I don't know the difference, other than three minutes is longer.
Considerably, I would have thought.
Yeah.
Um, okay, thank you. Um, and just my last question, the response to the email you sent as a civilian, you described as evasive and opaque, um, but you weren't surprised. Can you just expand why you weren't surprised by a response that was evasive and opaque?
It, it's, it's probably, um, it's probably a history of engagement within Navy and within senior leadership, within particularly Navy I speak of, where those responses, um, are delivered in forums in, in, um, in what we call clear lower decks or town hall type, uh, meetings. And, and it's, it's, uh, it's, what would have got me angry previously is, is now, um, I, I, it, it's, it is what it is at this point for me.
So, um, sorry, am I to take it that, that it kind of reflected what you had experienced multiple times before?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Davies?
Thanks very much again for your evidence. Uh, I just want to revert to one of Commissioner Brown's questions about, in effect, why you were deployed to Afghanistan as single, um, Navy clearance divers, divers, uh, working with the army. I'd formed the impression, perhaps from around paragraph forty-three of your statement, that, uh, you might have been deployed there because of a lack of army personnel trained in dealing with IEDs?
Um, yes, I think, um, to provide a bit of context, uh, uh, in mid 2009, we were preparing for, uh, the, the, the elections in August. There was a, uh, an additional combat team raised in order to support that. Navy and Air Force provided EOD technicians, uh, to support the, um, to, to support the, uh, the ID fight, um, and embedded within, um, MRTF two.
The other question I had was towards the end of your evidence, you spoke about the, um, removal of, uh, of the reserve dive teams in 2018. Was any reason ever given that you were aware of for that?
Uh, no, so I, I was out of the uniform at that point in time, so I wasn't privy to the, uh, to the conversation within, within the branch or within the headquarter function. Other than to say it, it, um, it added a bit more extra work for the dive teams with the removal of the reserves, who provided some pretty important work, especially within Sydney.
Thanks.
I just have a couple of issues and thank you for your evidence, Mr Thomas. Um, firstly, just, so in relation to your colleague who was attacked by the shark, as, as I understand it from your statement, it was literally two weeks later, you deployed for pre-deployment briefing and then headed off to Afghanistan two weeks after the, the incident.
Yeah, it is, it is quite shortly afterwards and then, uh, I deployed, um, uh, with one RER, uh, based up in Townsville and that is for workups as well. Um, so there's, I was still in Australia for a bit of time before deploying into, in June of 2009.
And there wasn't, again, from your statement, there wasn't much by way of psychological support after the incident and before you deployed?
Uh, that's correct. So there wasn't, um, uh, that, that, that team that morning, uh, when Paul was attacked, has never actually been in the room together as a whole since. We, um, there was a member that discharged from the Navy. Myself and Paddy O'Sullivan deployed to Afghanistan. And the only person at the dive team was the youngest member of the dive team, um, Seaman McGlocklin.
Um, again, thank you for that. You also mentioned in your statement that you were disappointed. Both yourself and the other witnesses today deployed to places like Afghanistan. But on your return, there was no systemic or any other attempt really to sit you down or make you a part of a team that looks at lessons learnt, what do you bring back to the, the unit from your experience, considerable experience that you had over there. I've, I've got that right or?
Yes, that's correct.
So there's no real lessons learnt effort?
No, there's not. And, and some of the postings did not capitalise on the experience and, and particularly in experience like Afghanistan. And, and one thing that, um, would have added great value, um, to those that had come back was to be, probably posted to institu-, uh, instructional positions or to the headquarter function where they could effect some policy change or at least ensure the currency. There's, there's nothing, nothing like that.
And, um, just to the best of your knowledge, the, the concept of having a reserve diving team doesn't exist anymore?
It does not exist anymore.
Okay. And it would have been, I think, as Commissioner Brown alluded, certainly somewhere where somebody like any of the witnesses we've had today, Mr Mailey, with four decades of experience, could have been involved in and very, very helpful in.
Uh, yes, correct. I mean, it would have been an incredible outlet.
Um, just one final issue in relation to the email that's been much discussed. Um, I don't know who the author of the email is, it's been redacted and I'm not seeking to know who the author is. But did he or she know who you were and know of your experience?
Yes, they did.
They did?
Yes.
Uh, I just, I guess when they write to you saying, "Thank you for your interest", you don't need to comment, but it's certainly smacks of arrogance of somebody who knows a lot more than you and you've sort of have a vague interest in something that you don't really know much about it. It's just struck me as, um, the only explanation I could think of is that the person who wrote that didn't know who you were and was unaware of your experience, but that's not the case.
That's not the case. I knew that person personally and spent many postings with him.
Thank you. Um, Miss Longbottom, any questions arising?
No, thank you, Commissioner Kaldus. May Mr Thomas be excused from his summons.
Thank you, Mr Thomas. I know, as I said to earlier witnesses today, um, it, it's, it's, I know it's draining to have to go over everything again and relive the experiences, but we cannot thank you enough, all of you, and for the evidence that you've given today and for the amount of time you've been willing to spend with us to better inform us. It is incredibly helpful. Thank you. Thank you for your evidence, thank you for your service and your excuse from your summons to appear today. Okay, thank you. Are there any other matters, Miss Longbottom?
No, thank you, Commissioner Kaldus.
We'll just have a short break then. We'll just have a short break then.
Paul Rice. The Royal Commission into Defence and Veteran Suicide will now adjourn. The Royal Commission into Defence and Veteran Suicide is now resumed. Please be seated.
Commissioners, um, you'll recall yesterday in the evidence of Dr. Drew and separately in the evidence of Professor Parker, Sharon Parker and Associate Professor Jiritsma, uh, that they referenced burnout and its relationship to work design and organizational leadership. Um, further, you'll recall that during the previous hearings in Perth, uh, we examined Royal Australian Navy, Western Australian witnesses at Fleet Base West, um, and HMA Sterling, and you heard from witnesses who spoke about the impact of, of what they turned, termed burnout in the workforce. Um, among those witnesses was Commodore Heath Robinson. He was the commander of Support Force, uh, and he gave evidence on the twenty-second of May, two thousand and twenty-three, and he indicated that he gained an understanding of the significance of burnout from his reading the work of Professor Gordon Parker, an expert on the topic. Uh, Commissioners, we have Professor Parker now in the witness box. Uh, might I ask that he be sworn in?
Do you, Professor Gordon Parker, swear by Almighty God that the evidence you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I swear.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, by way of background, Professor Parker is a Scientia professor of psychiatry at the University of New South Wales, which position he has held since two thousand. And further, he's an honorary medical officer at the Prince of Wales Hospital. He has also held that position since two thousand. Uh, Professor Parker has an extensive medical career in the field of psychiatry and is a world-leading expert in research on the topic of burnout and further mood disorders. From nineteen eighty-three to two thousand and twenty, Professor Parker was a consultant psychiatrist at the Prince of Wales Hospital. And from two thousand and one to two thousand and three, he was the director of the Mood Disorders Unit, uh, which unit was incorporated into the Black Dog Institute. That was an institute that Professor Parker founded. Professor Parker has written some twenty-three books and published over a thousand scientific papers. Most recently in two thousand and twenty-one, he wrote a book entitled Burnout: A Guide to Identifying Burnout and Pathways to Recovery. The significance of Professor Parker's work has been recognized by various awards and honors that he has received, including most notably in two thousand and ten, an Officer of the Order of Australia Award. Also in two thousand and ten, the Australian Human Rights Commission's two thousand and ten Human Rights Awards. Uh, it was a nomination for his tackling depression at work. Uh, and then in two thousand and twenty, he has been the recipient of the Australian Mental Health Prize. Professor Parker holds a Bachelor of Medicine and a Bachelor of Surgery from the University of Sydney and from the University of New South Wales, a medical doctorate, a PhD, a Doctor of Science degree, and he obtained those latest, that last degree in nineteen ninety-seven. Commissioners, we have a tender list and a tender bundle associated with Professor Parker, and I tender the documents referred to therein. Um, you will see in this tender list there is a reference to certain pages from the book to which I referred, and, and they, uh, appear in that tender list, I trust, at item two, I believe. Um, I tender those documents.
Thank you, Ms. Rubegotti. Um, they'll be accepted into evidence and allocated the next lot of numbers. Thank you.
Thank you. Professor Parker, um, might I ask you to address the topic of burnout and the definition of burnout? And in so doing, could I take you in the first instance um, to the definition that is provided by the World Health Organization in the International Classification of Diseases, the eleventh revision? I might ask that be displayed. And that is exp dot double zero one zero dot triple zero nine dot triple zero one. And whilst that is coming up, uh, I, I will commence, I, I'd ask the operator just to focus on the text. I'd be most grateful. And you'll see there that it's, burnout is identified as being a syndrome conceptualized as a result of chronic workplace stress that has not been successfully managed. It is characterized by three dimensions, and they are indicated there: feelings of energy depletion or exhaustion, increased mental distance from one's job, or feelings of negativism and cynicism related to one's job, and reduced professional capacity. In particular, it is noted that burnout refers specifically to phenomena in the occupational context and should not be applied to describe experience in other areas of life. Having started with that, Professor Parker, might I invite you to comment on that definition and augment it in any way you think appropriate?
Yes, thank you very much. Um, this, I call this a triadic definition in that there are three defining features, and essentially it reflects work undertaken by a US psychologist in the early eighties, Kristina Maslik. She developed the Maslik Burnout Inventory, or the MBI, and she had three symptom constructs. One was exhaustion. The second one was called depersonalization, but was later called lack of empathy or loss of empathy. And the third was reduced professional efficacy or compromised work performance. That, um, triadic definition has dominated conceptualizing of burnout, uh, for subsequent decades. And it's been established that over eighty percent of papers published on burnout, using a burnout measure, adopt that measure and the definition. Um, our view is that it is somewhat limited. We undertook a number of studies, um, which in the book we've called the Sydney Studies, and they differed from Maslik's work. Maslik never described the symptoms that she put in to define burnout, but had a number of hypotheses largely limiting the constructs that came out in the analyses to ones that she personally valued. Our analyses suggest a wider definition. We give a big tick to exhaustion. Exhaustion is the most defining feature of burnout. The second one, often called loss of empathy, um, we define more as a lack of feeling tone. Um, it sometimes has been called compassion fatigue, if not, uh, loss of empathy, but we find a more diffuse concept where people just don't get much pleasure or enjoyment out of anything. There is a third component that's not in the ICD or the Maslik definition, and that is cognitive impairment. And burnout actually has a long history. It goes back to fifth century AD in Egypt when the monastics, um, were struck down with the so-called epidemic of burnout. It was called a chidia, and it was regarded then as akin to sloth, and it was actually the eighth cardinal sin. The point about that ancient definition is that it included cognitive impairment. So we regard that as actually one of the key features of burnout. People say that they can't read as they used to. They just tend to skim or scan. They can't register information. After that, of course, you do get reduced, um, performance, so that third criterion may be a symptom, but it also may just simply be a consequence of the other features. And along with those symptoms go others, such as most people with burnout will have some level of depression, anxiety. Uh, insomnia is extremely common, uh, despite people feeling exhausted, and they have compromised immunological functioning so that they, uh, tend to develop more infections. It can be very, very physical. So, um, the man who introduced the term, Herbert Freudenberger, um, was working as a psychologist during the day and in a drug center at nights and weekends, and one day wanted to go on his Christmas holidays and he could not get out of bed. In our book, we have a chapter written by a woman called Grace, a very successful professional woman. She could not get out of bed, and in addition, when she was admitted to the emergency department of the hospital, it was found that she had a pulse rate of over a hundred and fifty and a very, very low blood pressure. So it can have profound physical, um, manifestations. Uh, Arianna Huffington of Huffington Post fame, uh, when she developed, she just fell to the ground hitting her head on the, on the, um, on the floor. So we do challenge that rather limited definition. Secondly, we also challenge the suggestion that it only occurs in occupational contexts. I don't think it's a particularly important point here, but we find burnout exactly the same symptom profile in people who are dealing with demanding family duties, such as looking after, maintaining a job, looking after children, looking after frail parents, and so on and so forth. Thirdly, the model is essentially, essentially a symptom model. And we argue for what we describe as a diathesis stress model. Most conditions in psychiatry um, can be best modeled in the same way as diathesis stress conditions. The diathesis refers to the predisposing factor, and the stress refers here to the precipitating factor. Most commonly, probably in psychiatry, the diathesis is a genetic one. But for burnout, we establish that burnout is much more likely to be experienced by those who are dutiful, reliable, conscientious, if not perfectionistic. And that's one of the very sad aspects about burnout. It affects, it affects good people. People who are working hard, trying to do the best in their job and meet all the right parameters, and they just go the extra yard and put themselves more under stress. When we released the English version of the Burnout Book in January this year, it was actually that personality component that was picked up by Time Magazine as a real focus for redefining burnout, not simply just as a symptom model, but with a broader context that it does generally involve, uh, certain overrepresented personality characteristics. A rather long-winded answer to your question.
No, not at all, Professor Parker. And I might, I will come to the, the, the question of, of who might be predisposed to burnout in a moment. But just to clarify a couple of points arising from the answer that you gave. You indicated a, a number of the, the, the symptoms of burnout. Might I also inquire whether irritability or anger might emerge as a symptom?
Indeed. Um, more likely to get irritability. When people are stressed, they can internalize by worrying or they can externalize by being irritable. Um, and so that would be the, um, the way in which it can be manifested.
A- a- and as to that manifestation, how does it play, take place? Is, is, is it the case that the symptoms emerge simultaneously or can they emerge at different points? Perhaps you could speak to that point?
That's not clearly established in the literature. People vary, saying that they can all come on at once, uh, and others say that there is a sequencing process. Um, I think we see, we see both, um, in play, and I don't think the sequencing is, evidence is particularly strong. And when you look at it, uh, various components of the burnout syndrome may be prioritized in some studies and some in others. There is another problem in, there's a lack of literature addressing the issue of how do we distinguish between burning out and a more finite state of being burnt out? And I think that's probably more important if we're looking at a sequencing model. So I think burning out is, the individual still has the elasticity, the capacity to come back. Being burnt out, they've lost their elasticity, their compass, capacity to return to normal is sometimes absolutely categorically reduced.
And, and in that regard, Professor Parker, might I ask, there's two questions, and you could perhaps take them, sorry, item. A- as, as to the distinguishing between being burning out and being burnt out, are the symptoms reversible at each stage? And do the interventions differ? Might you speak to those two issues?
Thank you. We don't know because there is no distinction in the literature between burning out and being burnt out. Um, I give an analogy of Hooke's law, uh, which was something I vaguely remember from physics at school. That is, if you've got an elastic body and you stretch it within its limits of elasticity and let go, it will return to its original shape. But if you stretch it beyond its limits, it loses its elasticity and doesn't come back into place. So I think that when people are burning out, there is great capacity to redress and address that state. And we may talk about it later, but maybe simple things like having time off, having a break, exercise, whatever. But when a person has reached that more finite state of being burnt out, then in fact, it usually involves a work-life rebalancing. Despite that rather negativistic finite state reference that I gave, in fact, we find that the outcome for burnout, when properly managed, is far more optimistic than most people imagine.
Yes, thank you. Um, and, and we might, we might come to some methods of managing burnout in a little more detail later, as you say, but I would like to return to a matter you raised earlier, and namely, who might be predisposed or have propensity to suffer burnout. In that context, might I ask, um, some evidence of the Commodore Heath Robinson, um, to be displayed? I'll give you the transcript reference. It's T six three dash six zero seven five at six zero to six zero seven six at lines thirty-nine. Um, whilst that evidence is being brought up in writing, I will read it to you, Professor Parker. Um, Commodore Robinson says that burnout is significant because it is our best people that are most affected by it. And it's likely to be people like your commanding officer, your operations officer, your head of department, the most, the best hard-working chief that you've come to rely on them, and you rely on them more than you should because they put their hand up and work long hours. It's something even in the senior leadership group that we need to be mindful. Um, in my own Capstone course, we had the chief of Defence Force and every other senior leader telling us to be mindful of this ourselves. Now, noting what you said earlier, do you have a response to that? And might you be able to speak to the, um, any particular predisposing characteristics?
Well, I certainly agree, um, with that, uh, call, and I think it's a very prescient one. Um, because it does, um, address the issue of predisposing factors to burnout. That's another aspect about the, uh, general model proposed by Kristina Maslik that basically it didn't concede any predisposing personality style. It was a simple equation. Work stress creates burnout. The individual doesn't bring anything to the table. So I just, in a sense, repeat myself that, um, we have found the most, there are a number of overrepresented personalities, um, type A personality, you know, people that are constantly on the go and pushy and chubby, and a couple of other personality styles. But the one that stands out most distinctly is that those who are diligent, reliable, conscientious, hardworking, who put in the extra hours, um, who take on more load, um, without apologies for that. And that's the sad aspect about burnout because, as I said before, it's more likely to be experienced by good people. And that's a throwaway line. At one stage, I was playing golf and putting this point to a colleague, and he turned to me and he said, "Well, Gordon, that helps explain why sociopaths never develop burnout." And while that was a throwaway comment, I think it's, again, a rather perceptive one. That burnout, again, affects good people. People who have no capacity for empathy or care do not develop burnout.
Yes, thank, thank, thank you, Professor Parker. Um, tell me, do you consider burnout to be a stress reaction?
Yes, I do. Um, I, I, I see it as either an acute or a chronic stress reaction, uh, but a nuanced one. Again, the nuances would be the particular stress Again, the nuances would be the particular stresses, which will, could be formal work or it could be demanding homecaring duties. And with the individual not being able to walk away or resolve from those responsibilities, just keeping on, keeping on, doing everything, doing the right thing, being reliable, being conscientious and not walking away. Now, if that's accepted, then it's interesting that the I C D definition doesn't position burnout as a psychiatric condition. It positions it as an occupational phenomenon. And yet, in I C D and DSM, which is the American Classification System, stress reactions are very commonly listed. There's probably half a dozen in the DSM. So it's interesting that they took the I C D authors, World Health Organisation, took this position as seeing it as an occupational phenomenon rather than a psychiatric disorder. And I don't know whether you want to speak to it, but just allow me thirty seconds perhaps on this issue. There are advantages to that because it means it de-stigmatizes burnout rather than calling it a psychiatric disorder. But it seems to me there's a, there's a problem here if you have stress reactions listed in DSM and I C D, but you don't position burnout as a stress reaction, then what is it?
Yes, certainly. But to the extent that one might expand burnout beyond its being an occupational condition and to take into account those who might be under stress, in stress, find themselves in stressful situations, whether in the home environment or the other. You accept, don't you, that it's a proper recognition of their response to the experiences in which they find themselves?
Yes, and the very word has high resonance and salience to people who are going through the syndrome. The word depression can often be thrown around rather loosely. Can be clinical depression, it can be just a sad mood, et cetera, et cetera. Burnout really has a level of precision that is quite useful. It's rare for people to say they're burnt out when something else is going on when they're an occupational phenomenon. At the clinical side of things, there's great confusion in distinguishing burnout from anxiety and from depression and whatever. So there are advantages to the term burnout and positioning it as an occupational phenomenon as long as we allow that occupations not just formerly employed ones.
Yes, thank you, Professor Parker. And I think it's salient to note here the relevance to this Royal Commission insofar as we're considering the impacts on defence members, but we are also, as a consequence of our terms of reference, considering impacts on their families who are often in stressful situations themselves and supporting them. You're having mentioned other diagnoses there in depression and anxiety. I might turn to the topic of differential diagnosis, Professor Parker, and invite you to comment in particular with depression in the first instance. Are they, are they the same, burnout and depression? I take it no, given your response. But if not, are they associated in some way? Can you speak to that?
I won't go into the history extensively, but just make a quick comment. I mentioned that Achidia or burnout was made the eighth cardinal sin. Pope Gregory came along later and joined Achidia with Tristisia, which was the cardinal sin of depression, together to create the seven deadly sins. So that effectively showed early confusion as what's burnout and what's depression? The current literature, about fifty percent people fall one way, fifty percent fall the other. We have strong evidence arguing against depression being synonymous with burnout. When we're developing the measure of the hundred or so items, we put in thirty seven depression items. We got out no depression factor at all. So I can give a lot of other arguments to suggest that burnout and depression are not the same. However, when people get burnout, they not uncommonly get a number of depressive symptoms. And that can actually proceed on, subject to what's happening in the workplace, to a full depressive syndrome. And some people with burnout are slightly more likely, sorry, some people with depression are somewhat more likely to develop depression. So the two commonly occur. And one of the problems with that is if you give a burnout measure, and our Sydney burnout measure is no exception, but we've been very open in exposing the problems. If you've got burnout, you'll get a high score on the burnout measure. But if you've got significant depression, you'll probably also get a high score on the measure as you would if you had some physical condition that made you exhausted, like severe anaemia or you're having chemotherapy. So we believe that there needs to be clinical reasoning involved to distinguish between burnout and depression. And it's best resolved not by looking at the symptoms, but by looking at the drivers, the etiological factors. So what we find with depression, if it's not a biological one coming from within, then people are reporting being exposed to some depressogenic event which impacts on their self-esteem and self-worth. And they feel diminished and demoralized and hopeless and helpless. They're the drivers for depression and they're singularly different to the drivers for burnout, which as we may look at more related to, you know, work stress, time pressures, environmental factors, role conflicts and so on and so forth. So it's in employing a clinical reasoning approach, we've actually found greater utility in looking at the precipitating factors when we're wanting to differentiate the two. And it is important to differentiate the two because antidepressant medication may be relevant to depression, but it's never relevant in pure burnout.
No, quite. Thank you, Professor Parker. And in that connection, before we move to the burnout measure, and I do wish to come to that in a little detail, I might invite you to comment on some other differential diagnoses and anxiety, and I think you have mentioned that briefly, chronic fatigue syndrome. Is there any relationship between burnout and either of those?
I don't believe so if we strictly define chronic fatigue syndrome as somebody having an acute viral assault, maybe glandular fever, Ross River virus, something like that. And then they develop a post-viral fatigue state. And I think we're seeing the same situation with Covid. And if you limit the chronic fatigue syndrome to that scenario, then in fact, it's so different to burnout. The problem is that chronic fatigue, just like some other terms in psychiatry, and a much earlier one was neurasthenia, they can be applied to heterogeneous conditions. So if you strictly define chronic fatigue syndrome as a post-viral one, there's no diagnostic dilemma.
Thank you. And again, Professor Parker, before we move to measures, I want to address a point obviously at the heart of this Royal Commission. And that is burnout and suicidality and suicide risk. What is your view as to whether burnout can increase the risk of suicide?
Burnout per se, I think is highly unlikely to increase the risk of burnout, to suicide. However, keeping in mind that many people with burnout have, as I said before, these highly reliable, highly dutiful personality styles, not wanting to walk away, if they've got burnout and the employer and those around them are not appreciating the nuances of what the work is doing to them, maybe putting more pressure on them, whether it's the employer, the senior, the H R department or whatever, being insensitive to their needs, they often feel backed into a corner. And in many situations, it may not apply to defence, but I certainly see a number of Commonwealth public servants. They, when they're in that situation, they've got the burnout, their employers are putting huge pressure on them and they should leave, they don't. And that's when the depression can come in and the person can feel absolutely overwhelmed, backed into a corner. And again, being perfectionistic, people who are perfectionistic tend to be very binary. They don't see third options. So it's either everything work must be made tickety-boo or there's no chance for me, I'm out of here, no one cares about me, catastrophe. And that's the high-risk situation that can occur when the person with burnout feels an insensitive environment, a non-responsive environment, a non-caring environment, and yet they feel locked into the organisation because they have such high levels of loyalty.
Yes, so to summarise, really environmental factors and personality factors will play a very big contributing role as to whether burnout can lead to a spiralling towards suicidality or suicide. Is that correct?
Indeed.
Thank you. You mentioned, Professor Parker, a screen out, a screen for burnout, I should say. Might I ask you to address that topic? And how effective it is? And you have addressed that a little, but I might invite you to expand on that.
There are a large number of burnout measures. As I mentioned, the Maslick Burnout Inventory has been used in over eighty percent of publications using a measure. However, it has no cutoff scores. There's no decision built into how you assess whether somebody's burnt out or not. And so people use it in differing ways. Looking at burnout rates in doctors, a meta-analysis was undertaken, looking at studies of doctors using the M B I, and they found prevalence rates ranging from three percent to eighty five percent, which just strains credibility. So that's one of the problems with many of the measures, that they have burnout symptoms, but they don't have cutoff criteria for diagnosis. Some other measures are extremely limited. There are a couple of measures that just simply measure exhaustion. Now, if you do that, then there's no difference between burnout and exhaustion. Other more abrasive measures, and I include our own, cover all the symptoms of burnout, but as I mentioned earlier, they are compromised by the lack of, or problems with their specificity. In essence, they may have high sensitivity. If you are burnt out, you'll return a high score. But a high score or a moderate score does not necessarily mean that you are burnt out. It could be that you've got severe depression or you've got severe anaemia or whatever. And that's why relying on a measure is unwise. It's similar, I suppose, to a thermometer. A thermometer may tell you that you've got a temperature, but it's not telling you whether, you know, you've got bronchitis or you've got meningitis.
No, indeed.
So we have to be very careful about measures.
Yes.
Yep.
That said, Professor Parker, I might invite the operator to display the Sydney Burnout Measure. And that is exp dot double zero one zero dot triple zero five dot double zero one four. And that is at pages double zero one nine to double zero two zero. And I won't ask you, Professor Parker, to comment on each and every aspect of that measure. But might you elaborate a little on the type of issues that you're, factors that you're trying to identify by reference to this measure?
Well, this measure was developed in a large sample of people with burnout, over a thousand people. But they also could have had other conditions. So what we basically got was a burnout profile, but with some mixture of other symptoms. So the key constructs to the Sydney Burnout Measure exhaustion. Secondly, cognitive disturbance. Thirdly, a loss of empathy. Fourthly, insularity and withdrawal. Fifth, impaired work performance. And then the final one is an unsettled mood construct where people report anxiety, depression, irritability and comedy along with other physical symptoms. And these are common correlates of most other psychiatric conditions or psychological conditions. So it's not surprising that they come up. But the first five constructs that I went through are the ones that we see as integral and central to defining burnout.
Thank you. Now, Professor Parker, you have indicated some of the limitations when it comes to screening for burnout. Nonetheless, what is your view as to whether there are benefits for monitoring for burnout in the workplace? And how might you do it? Do you do it alone or do you do it in combination with other means of monitoring health and wellbeing?
Yes, I'm not confident about my answer. It depends really on the organisation and how you go about measuring it. If it's given out like an anxiety measure, a depression measure, a measure assessing whether you have bipolar disorder or not in an organisation, and people are identified in completing that questionnaire, then you obviously have to expect that you're going to go to strong denial bias. People are not willing to admit that they may have some condition because there may be, and in the defence forces, one would imagine, a very high chance of not being allowed to continue or whatever. And secondly, again, in many areas, and again, I would think in the defence force, there is the the concept that one has to be tough and you don't admit to any frailties or any psychological limitations or whatever. So if there is any monitoring or an attempt to assess that relies on people with the assumption that people will talk openly about their burnout, then I think it's dead in the water. You can, however, I think, monitor an organisation by having people return an anonymous questionnaire and see how that particular group rates. But I wouldn't just give a measure of burnout, I would also ask people to anonymously put down the factors that they feel might be relevant in making their work difficult. If you've got a, here I have to again come up with another sort of separate scenario. If you've got a work environment where the organisation really values keeping their people well physically and psychologically, then in fact, you can have a very different scenario where people who are experiencing burnout feel comfortable about going to a superior or to a boss and saying, look, I'm really burnt out, boss. I need to have a week off, I need to have a month off. And where the boss reciprocally might come up to somebody and say, look, I've noticed you're doing a bit hard. If you've got that sort of work environment, then in fact, I think you can have a totally different scenario. And in America, there's great recognition of the costs of burnout. And there are very many firms that will go into organisations and they're called in because successful organisations know that burnout has a huge cost. Five years ago, the estimate in the world was a third of a trillion dollars. They know that they will lose their best employees. They'll go off for another job, which is less stressful. Or they will not turn up for work, which is absenteeism. Or they'll turn up for work but not be able to fire up their brain, which is presenteeism. So in America, there are many organisations that can tackle this fairly openly. And if you've got that sort of work environment, then you can get away with a very caring, thoughtful, interactive process. But in many organisations where the strictures disallowing any psychological frailty or problem, or where there is a toxic environment component, then it's a totally different scenario.
Thank you, Professor Parker. That leads me to inquire of you, what might some of those workplace factors be? What might some of the triggers be to contribute to burnout? I think you have identified some already, but I'd invite you to elaborate.
Well, in our book, we actually have an appendix B where we list the triggers that subjects in our studies nominated. And they're not just ones like workload pressures, but they also include role conflict and ambiguities, the organisation's culture, job opportunities and prospects, organisational rewards, organisational fairness and equity, relationships in the workplace between seniors and colleagues, and the match of the norms and values and objectives that the individual has with the organisation. And you can see again, and too much organisational change can also be a factor. And I think you can see again how personality comes into the story, that it's not just having to be on your iPad and your phone twenty-three hours a day, that sort of imperative. It can be other factors such as you feeling that your superiors have values that you do not share and you are being compromised in your workplace. that you do not share, and you are being compromised in your workplace.
Yes, and connected to that, I take an organisational responsiveness and support of the relevant individual is significant, or a lack thereof.
Yes, yes, again, but I'd like to make a slight caveat. Many organisations think, okay, we are aware of burnout, and my university sent out an email today. Hope you enjoyed last week off, which was sort of downtime for everybody, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. You can build in those strategies, but in fact, you're really conscientious, reliable people won't necessarily take them up. They'll say, but hang on, there's so much work to be done. So again, many of the solutions are fairly facile in application, unless they're thought through and they're individualised against the actual organisation.
Thank you, Professor Parker. And I might come to the question of managing burnout in a moment. But in respect of, you mention organisational change. And if we think that burnout can occur not simply within the workplace, but more broadly, if you take a broader view, as you indicated earlier, of an organisation, if we're talking about burnout in the family, particularly in the context of defence, do you have an opinion as to whether constant moves or changes and postings and the like, and the impact that that might have on family members? Whether that could be a triggering factor for burnout?
Well, it certainly could be, but again, I'd apply horses for courses model. For some people, they could think of nothing better than moving every six months or every year.
Yes.
But for somebody whose personality style or living circumstances mean that they like to remain loculated, they want that base from which to operate, then in fact, being required to move or so on, again, might be quite stressful and conducive to all sorts of stress reactions.
Thank you. And just one other, a couple of other aspects of defence work in particular. I have in mind, say, the physical aspects, so high-risk work, high-tempo work, working in confined spaces, if you think of our submariners, for example. Do you have a view on that in relation to burnout?
Absolutely. But again, it's horses for courses. I had a godfather who worked on submarines. And if they got back home and they hadn't had a torpedo drop on them, they'd walk to the end of the wharf and fire their service revolvers at each other, because they wanted a bit of adrenaline. So again, personality comes into the story. For some people, they want the excitement, they want the volatility. And they're highly unlikely to get burnt out. It's people who, again, are reliable, conscientious, and are constrained, and at worst case bullied.
Thank you. You have touched upon how burnout might be managed. And I might finish with that topic and refer you again to the evidence of Commodore Robinson. I might ask for that to be displayed. It's T six three dash six zero seven six, at lines four to twenty. But that's being brought up. But just by, as you read through that, I'm interested, how might burnout best be managed? We have in that evidence of Commodore Robinson that for those who are, and he puts it, their own worst enemies and try to help other people, but they do it at their own personal cost. That he makes sure that they're obliged to do trauma training, mental health training for leaders, obliged to take three days of short leave on top of normal leave every year, psychological screenings to make sure that we're monitoring how they're progressing. What is your view in relation to that? Is it enough? Can more be done? Could you elaborate on that, please?
Again, I would argue for horses for courses model. Many times, these attempts to address and prevent burnout are very formulaic, and they're laid down so that it's a sort of tick the box. We've set this up, so it's all tickety-boo. At one hospital I worked at, I was required to do eighty-five mandatory training programmes. My personal judgement was that only about five of them were salient and really relevant. And so there is a real risk. And when you have the tick the box one, where an organisation says, okay, we know that this job can be stressful, it can create burnout, so we'll have, you know, the following impositions, and everything will be tickety-boo. In some organisations, that is going to be a complete waste of time, because it's meaningless and people will see it as inappropriate. Also, it lacks the individualism that would be required. So I would, you know, argue for, again, a horses for courses model, where you ideally would seek to have an environment where people felt comfortable going to a superior if they're under stress or experiencing burnout, and that that person would individualise the interventions that might be required for them. But as I said at the beginning, many times organisations just impose a whole series of things, and then they can say, oh yeah, we recognise burnout, and we've got A, B, and C in place. That's tokenism, unless it's thought through and individualised, in my view.
Yes, thank you, Professor Parker. And yesterday, we heard evidence, as I mentioned before, from Professors Sharon Parker and Karina Jiritsma on the notion of work redesign and doing something more fundamental to address the health and wellbeing of employees. So not just focusing on the individual and responding to individual needs, but looking at the formulation of the organisation's work and how the work might impact on the employee. I take it from what you say that it is the case that in order also to address burnout, it's important for organisations to look at the way the work is designed or what they are doing, and the impacts it has on their employees. Would you agree with that?
I'd certainly agree with that. But then, I think, if you're going to handle it in a sophisticated way, you need to examine, in regard to certain individuals, why that work environment is stressful to that particular person. And you may well find that the job description is pretty straightforward and in and of itself not stressful. But the person who's given a job, say, where their department is to distribute certain goods all around the place, and this is fairly straightforward, not particularly stressful, but the individual feels that they actually have to check every order before it goes out. Because if one thing goes wrong, it's going to be a catastrophe. So you can see the problem, again, personality comes into play, that here, the intervention would not be to say, okay, let's look at how many units this office is sending out. But let's look at how this particular individual, this manager, is actually handling the workload. And what you usually find in burnout is that people are just too diligent, too reliable, too conscientious. That's not arguing for, you know, bringing in sociopaths, but it really does suggest that one has to focus on the individual and not just the organisation.
I see, and that's why too, though, you need to have an organisation in which the individual feels comfortable to identify if they are experiencing symptoms of burnout.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I have no further questions. Commissioners, you might have some questions?
Thank you, Miss Rivergotti. Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Professor Parker. I wanted to ask a couple of questions, if I could. One, you talked about the instrument where the results were in doctors was a prevalence of between three and eighty-five percent, I think.
Yep.
Are there any figures that you could give us that perhaps are a bit more reliable, maybe from your own measure, in terms of the epidemiology of burnout?
Not from our own measure, we don't have it. But the literature is reasonably consistent in suggesting that at any one stage, one-third of doctors will be experiencing burnout. And over their medical career, two-thirds of doctors will experience burnout. The rates have gone up distinctly in the last two decades. And for doctors, the most distinctive factor accounting for the rise is the electronic medical record. You're not surprised?
I'm not surprised, at least. Are there any figures outside of doctors?
Oh, yes, yes. Now, in our book, we cover a number of professions. And as you might imagine from our model, you know, burnout overrepresented diligent, caring people, then all the caring professions are overrepresented. Doctors, nurses, veterinarians, teachers, and the highest rate is probably in the clergy. Then also lawyers have very high rate of burnout. And we may not necessarily include them in the so-called caring professions, but what the law demands is that everything is tickety-boo. Things, you know, no split infinities in writing a report. And that means that if you're going to succeed in law, you have to be incredibly methodical, reliable, conscientious, dutiful, et cetera. So very high rate in professions that demand that level of achievement. And I think, again, that goes back to, you know, bringing in the concept of personality. So occupation is important, but we have to look at what lies behind the occupation. The caring profession's requiring people to keep on caring and caring, and certain arenas, such as law, requiring people to be diligent, reliable, and conscientious.
So I'm just wondering, I mean, if we've got a third of our doctors at any one point in time, and perhaps some of these other caring professions, and two-thirds during their lifetime experiencing burnout, does that kind of constitute an epidemic?
Well, the word epidemic, it gets thrown around a lot, doesn't it? But has certainly been thrown around in regard to burnout. And I think that is fair when we look at the rates of burnout. And the general explanation is that we, in the last two decades in particular, we've required people to be quotes "on" twenty-four-seven. And, you know, just walking around any Australian city or driving around, you know, you see people on their phones the whole time. When I see people with burnout, they don't turn off their iPad, their emails to midnight. They often leave their phone next to them. So the requirement to be "on" and not have a distinctive period off probably goes a long way to explaining the secular changes that we're seeing. That's not to deny that burnout can't exist in other countries, and there are many terms in Asia to describe burnout. But again, it's usually a pretty driven environment. So the increased rates are well accepted. And I certainly buy the hypothesis that it's the increasing demands, and so commonly, demands we put on ourselves.
So it's not that we're less resilient than we used to be?
I'm not sure about the latter. I suspect, I would, I think I could waffle on and on about resilience. But I think that if you look, take a look at it from the other way, and look at the wellbeing literature, basically what we know is that wellbeing levels over the last four decades have stayed the same for men in most Western countries, but they've actually decreased for women. And the common interpretation there is that women are not only required to be a wife and a mother, but also to have a job as well. And the injunctions for men are more usually loculated to having a job. So we're seeing wellbeing levels drop. I don't, I mean, I wouldn't explain that by resilience. I'd explain that by, as I say, changes in our work-life ratio description. And so I think that is how I would see the issue in regard to burnout.
And so in terms of an organisation then seeking to minimise the risk of burnout, you talked before, you know, you've obviously got to look at the individual and look at the organisation. But what can an organisation do to minimise the risk of burnout? Or to prevent it even?
I think first of all, they might just care to do a survey, and as I mentioned earlier, have people anonymously return a burnout measure and the circumstances that they find to describe their job, the positive factors and negative factors, and just see what the hit rate is. And maybe compare it to other organisations to identify whether you've actually got a hotspot workplace where the working conditions make it highly likely for people to develop burnout. So I think you can do that at the organisational level, to see whether you're high prevalence, middle or low prevalence. Then after that, I think you have to, we have to consider how to change the culture of organisations, making them less authoritarian and more responsive. And that goes for individual managers versus their workers. Then I think we need to have a lot of common sense applied, just saying to people, okay, August the tenth is going to be your day off work to prevent you getting work, getting burnt out. So many of the strictures that are being brought in are being brought in, again, as a ticket box scenario. And I think they need to be individualised at the particular organisation. You need to avoid toxic bosses. They need to be identified and taken out of the scene, in my view. There's no advantage to having a toxic boss, and there are huge disadvantages. And if somebody's got the risk of burnout, they're experiencing burnout, and they've got a toxic boss, it is a dreadful scenario.
Okay, thank you.
So they're just a few thoughts.
What about things like working from home or a four-day working week? Both of which are quite topical out in the broader.
Overall, I think giving people the choice is a good one. Partly, there is a meta-communication to that. We're saying to you, as our employee, what would you favour? Would you favour being in the office the whole time, favour being at home the whole time, or if you want to mix? That's showing a level of, not parity, but it's showing a level of respect for the individual's decision-making. And most people will probably choose the right mix that reduces their risk of burnout. Now, it's true that the reliable, conscientious person, instead of getting to the office at eight in the morning when they had to go to the formal office, may start at six-thirty at home or seven. But in my experience, that's pretty rare. So I think if it's possible, allowing people to choose is a good scenario.
And just my last question, in terms of the issue of whether this is an occupational disorder or a stress disorder, I think you're arguing it's both. But are there any potential legal or WHS, Work Health and Safety implications to classifying it as one or the other? Is that an issue that you've explored?
It hasn't come up in our reading of the literature. But I'm sure it happens in real life. And certainly, as a clinician, when I see people with burnout, then it's, you know, pretty bread and butter for HR to regard it as an occupational stress issue. That's not always the best scenario. Once somebody with burnout has been identified by HR, and their line boss has said, we've got a real problem with this person, then it's a downhill story, in my clinical experience. But then I tend to see the people who haven't recovered. Yep.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Professor. Commissioner Douglas?
Thanks very much, Professor. You've given us the idea that there are figures on burnout for three of the four traditional professions, namely medicine, the law, and the clergy. How about the profession of arms?
I haven't seen any data.
Right. Have you seen anything anecdotal?
Nothing, nothing anecdotally either. And that may be an error on our part, but. Nothing, nothing anecdotally either, and that may be an error on our part, but, and it doesn't come up in the literature. And I suspect the reason is that, again, there is an imperative for many people in the police force, in the Defence Force, that they've got to look as if they're resistant to kryptonite, that you don't admit to any psychological problems and you just keep soldiering on. And I suspect that we, if there were data, they would be low because of denial and other responses that I'm alluding to.
Would you advise of any particular technique of surveying?
Yes, as I suggested earlier, I think that an anonymous survey could be extremely useful and important. I've mentioned, you know, half a dozen differing professions, but we've just undertaken one in regard to dentists and the dental profession. So I think there is a very reasonable argument that we need to identify the hotspots, and it would be really interesting to know whether defence is a hotspot for burnout, and if it is, why? What are the factors? It's unlikely to fall into the caring profession model, but it's highly likely to fall into the model closer to law, where people are required to do things in a precise, regulated way and where individualism is less likely to be allowed. And that's where the strictures could be real drivers of burnout.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks very much, Professor. I don't have any questions, but I just wanted to thank you. I also had a good look at the PowerPoint that you supplied us with, which will also give us an awful lot to think about. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And Mr Dyson, are there any questions from the Commonwealth?
No, thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, Miss Rubegotti?
Nothing arising, thank you, Commissioners.
May the witness be excused from his summons?
Certainly.
Professor, thank you again. I must say, it took me a little while to get through your CV, which is 100-plus pages, very impressive body of work over a few decades, but thank you for all you do. Okay? And thanks for coming today.
Very kind of you, thank you.
Your excuse from your summons to appear today, and thanks again.
Yep.
Are there any other issues?
No, I think we can adjourn until tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. We'll adjourn till tomorrow morning then. Not certain of the time.
12pm, I believe.
Midday tomorrow, is it? Yep.
The Royal Commission into Defence and Veteran Suicide will adjourn to 12pm Friday, the 21st of July.